A very warm welcome to all of you. It gives me immense pleasure to have you join for this special session on integrated business solution organized by Board of Studies academic. The integrated business solution paper is not simply a compilation of question. It represents a unique mix of financial, regulatory, strategic aspects. This paper has strengths to think holistically. Integrating knowledge from various areas to arrive insightful solutions. Let us understand by an example, okay. AirX, a budget carrier operating in the highly competitive Indian civil aviation market. With intense price wars, there's limited scope to increase profitability through ticket sales alone. Therefore, to improve its margin, the airline must adopt strategic moves. What is important here to adopt strategic moves? It means strategic decision making is very, very important at initial stage, okay. Now, the company may choose backward integration by investing in a maintenance, repair, overhaul facility or it may plan aviation training academy to reduce dependence on costly third party providers, okay. Alternatively, it may go ahead with forward integration. It may involve launching a travel booking platform or launching a bundled holiday package to capture downstream value. Now, I assume company AirX chooses backward integration and decides to invest in setting up an MRO unit. MRO means maintenance, repair, overhaul unit in SEZ, okay. To gain cost efficiency, okay, such a cross border investment must align with FEMA compliances. Suppose our company wants to invest in South Asian countries. Suppose it wants to invest in Singapore, then the investment should be as per provisions of FEMA. Under FEMA, if proposed investment exceeds four hundred percent of net worth of AirX, it would require prior approval of RBA. Once regulatory clearance is obtained, the next decision lies in funding the investment. Should the airlines raise money through ECB, domestic debt or equity? If it opts for foreign currency debt, it must have it must have exchange rate fluctuations. Especially since rupee is very, very volatile. If it choose domestic debt, then here it has to take decision whether to consider fixed rate or fluctuating rate, okay.
अब आप यहाँ पे देख रहे होंगे कि किस तरीके से अगर हमें कोई decision लेना है, ठीक है? अगर कोई भी decision लेना है तो सबसे पहले strategic decision. Strategic decision के base पर जो हमारे other decisions हैं वो कैसे connect होते हैं? अगर यहाँ पर कंपनी के पास scope ही नहीं है कि ticket sale कर के वो profitability generate करे और कंपनी अब यहाँ कंपनी को सोचना होगा कि उसको किस तरीके से strategic decision लेना है? या तो वो backward integration करेगी या forward integration करेगी? अगर suppose backward integration पे जाते हैं ये लोग और backward integration के लिए फौरन में कोई investment करने जा रहे हैं तो फिर वो FEMA जब भी फौरन आएगा तो FEMA के जो compliance हैं वो connect हो जाएंगे, okay? और जब FEMA के compliance connect होंगे साथ में अगर फौरन में investment होगी या फौरन से कोई भी dealing होगी तो Forex भी connect हो जाएगा यानी कि आपका finance decision भी impact होगा, okay? तो कहने का मतलब क्या है कि कोई भी strategic decision होगा तो उसके साथ जो है other जो compliance, finance और यहाँ तक की taxation related issues जो भी हैं वो connected रहेंगे, यही integrated business solution है. Now, further if airlines decides to expand into other operations such as selling package in flight meals or branded goods, okay, they must also consider GST implications, okay. The key takeaway is that strategic decisions must be assured not only with operational feasibility but also with financial wisdom and regulatory compliances. यानी कि आपको जो भी strategic decision लेने हैं लेकिन उसके साथ जो है आपको देखना है कि financial impact क्या होगा और साथ में regulatory impact क्या होगा, ठीक है? This involves thinking like a CEO. Okay, ranking, strategic alignment, financial optimization and regulatory foresights. Especially in sector where the margins are razor thin. आपका जो margin है ना बहुत minimum है यहाँ पे. और यहाँ पे एक और problem है कि external factor like fuel prices and currency swings can materially impact your decisions. तो एक decision के साथ क्या connected है? दूसरा decision, तो इसलिए यहाँ पे importance किस चीज की है? कि आपको जो approach लेनी है वो holistically follow करनी है. यानी कि एक decision से दूसरा connected है, दूसरे से तीसरा connected है. Now, we are privileged to have with us CA Sumit Dada, a highly experienced chartered accountant with over seventeen years of expertise across multinational audit and accounting forms. His area of specialization include statutory audits, Indian accounting standards, valuation and risk management. Okay, today's session will revolve around a comprehensive case study KG Airlines, a prominent Indian low-cost carrier. The case study inspired by a real-life company explored challenges such as fleet expansion, rising cost, digital transformation, customer loyalty and competitive pressure in the environment. It integrates balance scorecard approach to evaluate performance across financial, customer internal perspective and learning and growth measures. The case material have been already uploaded on the portal. We have already uploaded this case on BOS knowledge portal, okay. Now you are advised to keep this handy for your reference purpose. This is intended to be an interactive session so that you can raise any technical queries specific to the case either by unmuting yourself or typing your queries in chat box. Feel free to communicate in Hindi or English whichever you are comfortable. Please note that general questions not directly related to the case study will be addressed at the end in last fifteen minutes. हम आपकी जो भी queries हैं सारी resolve करेंगे, चाहे आप हिंदी में पूछें, इंग्लिश में पूछें, ठीक है? और लेकिन जो general query है वो last के fifteen minutes में हम आपकी reply करेंगे, ठीक है? With that, let us begin the session and I hope it will be a very, very good learning experience for everyone. Sir, over to you.
Thank you, Saeed Deepak sir for the setting the context right and good evening all fellow participants, dear students. First of all, I must appreciate and thanks Board of Studies for organizing such an initiative for students to learn and get hands-on experience. You all can chat through if you have any queries to make, any point to add, whatever we go through the deliberation, feel free to add in chat. Let me first share the screen and then start with the ball rolling. So, just to give a background, I did my CA in two thousand three. I got gold medal in CA Inter and when I saw the syllabus because in our time we do not have this concept of IBS, we do not have this paper. And after being working in big fours in India and abroad and various MNCs abroad, one thing which was which we realized. As a CA earlier, we were only focused on numbers. We were only focused on audit, tax, we were only focused on two plus two four, that we would call as number crunchers as C. But once you realize now, the demand of the business is not only number crunchers. They want someone who can understand the stories behind the number. They want someone who can analyze, who have holistic view, whereas Deepak sir has rightly said you need to have a holistic view. Just by knowing the numbers is not enough, you need to know where the numbers flow, what impact these numbers have. And any decision making by a business can only have when you know the in and out of the number. When you know how these numbers are moving and that's why you will see nowadays many businesses, many startups are run by chartered accountants who have holistic view because as an auditor generally in the three years of internship, we or two years of internship now, you generally audit and when you audit, you technically get an idea of entire business process. If you are smart enough to pick it up, you can easily become an entrepreneur because you know the entire process. And that's why it is not only relevant to know only tax audit, you need to know beyond tax and audit. But that's where the business will respect you. Even if you want to become a practicing CA, I need to know entire things. Because when a client would like to come to me, the client would not like to go to ten different consultants for ten different areas. We all will agree as a one CA, I cannot be expert in all ten areas, but I can have basic knowledge of ten areas. So, I can guide the client on initially that okay, now you are going for a FEMA. How much percentage is allowed in FEMA? So, let's say somebody is coming and say I want to put seventy-five percent in an airlines. So, let's say some Indian airlines, ABC wanted to raise funds, can they issue seventy-five percent of share capital? If I don't know the basics, then I would not be able to advise. So, the answer is you cannot. FEMA permits only forty-nine percent to have a foreign investments in India in airlines industry. So, there are few things we need to understand, so this IBS will help you to understand. Now, as we know the case studies on a KG Airlines Limited, it's a real case studies and there are many more case studies which on a real life cycle we will go through the entire topics. Before we go more on this, let me scratch your brains and start with one quote given by Mr. Anand Mahindra. The quote given was, if you want to be a millionaire, start with a billion dollars and then start bracket buy in airline. Any idea in which context he made this quote? Anyone has any context if somebody would be aware why he would have read this quote and we will go more on this quote. Any quick thoughts somebody would have put on chat or like to speak whatever is okay with you, you like to speak or put on chat. What do we interpret by this quote when he made this on a tweet? Anybody would like to have some views on that? So, I'll give a background why this quote was made. When Jet Airways was going into IBC and prospective buyers were looking on. So, lot of people were messaging Mr. Anand Mahindra on internet and that why don't you buy Jet Airways and make it Mahindra Airways and make it profitable just like you make all your business profitable? That's what lot of people were chasing him and then he made this quote. Now, why somebody would have made this quote when is it too difficult to run a airlines business? What is your view? Is it too challenging? Now, if you all, anybody if you would like to start a business, if anybody if you like to start a business, which business you think will give you maximum return where the entry is limited by regulatory barriers or where anybody can open the business, which one you think will have a higher margins according to you? Anyone would like to have some thoughts on this? And see there is no negative marking in class. And see there is no, no negative marking in class in this session webinar, right? And there are no, no wrong answers. All are our thoughts. So, nothing is right or wrong. So, Suril, you agree where there is a regulatory barrier, I'll make more money because there everybody cannot come in. This is a no-brainer, right? Thank you for responding. Now, if we know that yes, so this is one of the five courses of Michael Porter, which is Harvard, very famous Harvard professor who has mentioned this. Now, if we know that there is a regulatory barrier, it is not easy to take airlines license. Not every day you hear a new company opening up. Even then Mister Mahindra said it is too difficult to run. Any idea why despite being a regulatory barrier despite there is low entrance coming in, very few? You can, you can count airlines on fingers, right? Fingers of your hand, image liya aha, umjho pe ginsakte kiti airlines India. Then why he think, why do you think he was trying to say that it is a risky business? But saying it risky does not mean other people will not open. People are making money, it's not that all airlines are not making money, there are some airlines who are making money. Now, one of the reasons why he made this quote was despite regulatory barrier, one of the big challenge in this, high capital intensive industry absolutely. This industry require high capex and high capex I can still bear. You know, if I am Bedlam, Mahindra's, I can still bear it, right? So, capital can be done, but the problem is along with high capex, it is high maintenance. So, one is capex, okay, you put it for hundred crores for five, ten, fifteen years, you are gone, fine, but that does not happen. Here, every year, every month, the maintenance costs are very high and because of various regulatory reasons. Because, so like, how many of you have ever driven your cycle or your, or your two-wheeler where the brake was not functioning but you said, okay, just let me go to the office or institute or I'll drive slowly and come back, you know the brake is not working, but you would have gone there. Have you ever gone there? Have you ever been there? Where you are, some of the, of your two-wheeler cycle or bike or car scooter is not working, you know it is not working. Or your taillight is not working or your headlight is not working and you say, I'll just go to the office or nearby, I'll drive slowly and come back. We would have done that. I'm sure most of you have done that. But can we do this with airlines? My small part is missing, no problem, let me go to plane because I need to drop passenger from seven o'clock from J four to eight o'clock to Delhi. It's a small thirty-five hours, thirty-five minutes flight that we go back and come back easily. Can we do that? Answer would be no. Even, even one small part is not there in the plane, entire plane will shut, shut down. And I'm sure many of you would be aware, even in a small cockpit, there are more than thousand parts, more than thousand parts in a small cockpit. And each part has a different relevance. So, because of these heavy maintenance capex, it becomes a huge challenge. We will discuss more on what is more challenges in this industry. So, as we talked about, just a brief touch about that threats of Michael Porter, which is a famous Harvard professor in nineteen seventies. He gave this model and he says, whatever industry you are working in, you need to see these factors and figure out where you can make money or control money. So, threats of new entrants, it is a plus sign where there are not new entrants can come in, then that's a business you can look on. Where buyers have power in regulatory, in airlines industry, does customers have power in airlines industry? Whenever you book a ticket, you first go to the airlines website or you go to various other websites, aggregator's website and see which airlines is offering me the lowest price. So, if I need to drive from Jepu to Delhi or Delhi to Bombay, Mumbai, I will not go for each websites of each airlines. I'll just go to the aggregators, see whichever is coming less, which is giving me high discount promo codes and do that. Customer can shift very easily. It does not take money to do over customer. Imagine when internet was not there. Think of a time when you could not book tickets on, on just internet. Then what is to happen? Either you goes to ticket booking agents, visit their offices or call them. Do you think a person would like to go to ten different booking agents physically? Answer would be no. Here I can go to ten different websites. Now, firepower is huge. Industry rivalry, now because of less entrance and because of few, few competitors, it becomes huge challenge. Can I increase my price as I wish? Can I, so if the, if there is some, some capex happening to me, can I pass on the burden to my customers? Probably answer is no. If you are into monopolistic business, you can always pass on the burden to the customer. But when, where you are in duopoly or oligopoly, when there are more than two, three players, as a business, you cannot pass on the customers. In terms of supplier power, supplier power, now if I cannot make money, if I cannot increase my revenue, what is the other way to make profit? Increasing revenue is not in my hands, that cannot be done. We tried and because of various reasons, I am not able to increase my revenue. Then how to increase my profit? Ethically, you cannot buy window dressing. How do you think we can increase our profit when I can't increase my revenue? I'm sure it's not a brainer for all of you. Then I will reduce my costs. If I can reduce my cost, then I can always make money. So, we need to see can I reduce my cost? But the biggest cost in airlines industry is from, what is the biggest cost you think in airlines industry? The biggest cost you think? The biggest cost is the, the planes. Plane, getting a plane is the biggest cost. Now, when getting a plane is the biggest cost and there are only two suppliers in the world. So, there are only two suppliers Boeing and Airbus. These are the two companies which manufactures the biggest planes and all. When there are limited suppliers, then I cannot tell, so can an airlines go and tell to Boeing? If you are not giving me discount, let me go to other supplier? Answer would be no. In a, in a place where you have thousands of suppliers, one supplier is not giving you required price, you will negotiate. You say if you are not giving me, let me go to the next supplier. Because you know there are plenty of it, you know that. But when it, when it comes to, when it comes to airlines industry, do we have negotiation power of supplier? Answer is no, we are strong. Threats of substitute, is it a major threat? It is not a major threat, though there is a threat, threat of substitute could be. Today, why a person will take a plane? And I'm talking only for official purpose, for office purpose. I will take a plane for office purpose because my travel time is reduced. If I am a executive, I need to work for a company. If I, if I travel by train that takes me twelve hours and I get a plane that takes me two hours, then prefer to go by plane so that I can save ten hours for the company, can be more productive and efficient. But what if, but what if, if we get hyperloop, if we get bullet train, where the same travel time of twelve hours could be reduced to three and a half hours? And if my, if my flight time is two hours, that is only time. Or I will also add the time of security check, boarding before arriving the time. So, at least one hour before and one hour after landing and going is the time you will take it. So, if it takes two hours flying time and two hours before I need to reach to this airport at four hours. So, where I can have a more efficient advanced mode of transport like bullet train if you get it, then there would be a threat. Many, or if we have well-connected highways. Like I remember when, when I was doing article ship and I used to travel to Jepu to Delhi, it used to take seven to eight hours, eight hours by road. Nowadays, if you go, it takes three and a half hours, there is a expressway with eight-lane expressway made in networks. So, this threat of substitute will always be there, but is it too material? It is not that material, but yes, to some extent it will have a damage. So, this is brought on Michael Porter's. Now, since we started with Anand Mahindra tweet, let me also last to make a, on a good note. Now, what makes a customer coming back? Apart from the fees, apart from the price, apart from the discount you offer, the customer delight, what we call, will let the customer come back. The experience, how you make the customer feel that experience will give you back. So, Mister Mahindra was traveling again on his birthday on Ethiopian Airways from UK to India. And while coming back on that day, on his birthday, the crew knew it is his birthday. And every crew member from pilot to all air hostess stewards, they all gave him a handwritten card. This handwritten card leave, left a so much impression on him that he asked all his colleagues in all offices that whenever you are traveling overseas abroad, use Ethiopian Airways. Now, certain, certain businesses cannot be run by advertisement. You cannot put a film star and say, look, I am traveling by X airlines, you should also come with this, enjoy the X airlines. People may not buy that because they say you have money, you can go there. But if you get the experience, you should feel the experience yourself. For sure you will try to use it and then you will also recommend. Because most of our, our, most of our purchasing decisions happens on views and reviews of our near Indians. So, when you are going to take something, you first look into reviews. If you buy something on, on Amazon, Flipkart, you don't just buy what is the cheapest before buying. First, for sure the price is a factor, but if something is coming very cheap and then it is written comments, totally useless product, do not buy at all, does not make sense, will you buy? Probably no. So, you always go for customer delight and that's why every airlines industry or any business what you do, no, it does not fit only to airlines. It fits to anything you do in life. Whether you are CA firm, whether your clients, if you give a customer delight, but this I does not mean you all start, all audit firms start writing and giving thank, birthday notes to their, their customers. If you do this could, might work out for you, but what we, what I meant by custom delight? Customer should feel that I am valued, then only will come back. So, that's why if you always see that the marketing strategy comes for, if you are giving something hundred percent and then say twenty percent extra. Do you think there is always twenty percent extra? Is it free or the cost is always inbuilt in the cost which we are giving? But I always say that it is extra, right? How do we market ourselves? How does the marketing agencies market? Thirty-three percent extra or twenty percent extra, but there is nothing extra. You have already been factored the price, but it makes feel good factor. The dopamine level in your brains gives a signal that okay, something you are getting free, so that feels, makes you feel good. Irrespective at, at all level, anything extra beyond that gives a customer delight. Now, aviation industry as we know, if, if, if we say that earlier in India, only one percent people would have traveled. And now if we say in last ten years or last five years, eight or nine percent people would have traveled. What does this shows? This shows that country is progressing, people are experiencing, they are spending. Because earlier people were believing in saving cost, so they were not much travel, they like to take the, the other options. Even if it is expensive in terms of time, they would like to save cost. But now they realize where time is factor, they've, they've booked airline industry. So, aviation always act as a catalyst for economic growth, tourism and trade. It hu, gives huge opportunities, direct and indirect employment opportunities. Starting from opportunities if we talk. So, there is opportunity for all kinds of jobs. First, we need to have booking agents. So, despite being websites, despite being automated, do you still think people, some people still use to prefer to go to agents? Despite everything is online, does people still prefer to go to agents? Yes, no, maybe? Any thoughts? Those, because these are not technical question, these are, you all would have practically. Why they would do that despite it is available online? Any thoughts? Any thoughts? Why they would do despite it is available online, why we do that? Because we get comfort, that okay, my agent is booking, he would be booking right thing. And if anything goes wrong, some goof up happen at airport, something happens at place, then you can call the agent and say, okay, please help me out. Once you book directly, nobody will come there and that becomes a challenge. Now, we all know what happened in COVID, when it happened in twenty twenty, entire airlines industry was shut. Many companies have declared bankruptcy and one of our company in India also got bankrupt and at least two got bankrupt. One is Jet Airways and another is Goair. These two companies have gone out of the radar. Now, interestingly, after the COVID, that there is a huge surge, it's a V-shaped recovery in travel bookings. Any idea why immediately after COVID, the travel booking have taken a hit and then new passengers added significantly very high? So, more than thirty percent of new traffic has added to the industry. Any idea why this much, this would have happened? Immediately after COVID, we got huge surge and then new flyers, you know, there are people who fly regularly. So, let's say I am flying since two thousand three, so I will not be counted in that, that nothing new has happened. But there were people who have never flown in flights last thirty, forty, fifty years of their life. But after COVID, the, there is a, they could see a huge increase in such kind of customers, first-line flyers. And why? Because then the concept of zindagi na milegi dobara, let us try and explore whatever best, don't save money for the future. Let us enjoy and that's why all travel plans, all hotel bookings, all tourism's were happening and it has a huge increase. So, post-COVID, the laws which airlines had earlier have been covered up. So, that's, that challenge has gone. Not only airlines, hotel industry and all other industry which had impact of tourists because of business shutdown, has been actually covered. Now, as I mentioned, the industry is challenging, but the quote also supports that when everything seems to be going against you. Remember that airplane takes off against the wind, not with it. This is the quote posted at one of the airlines headquarters. Now, there will be turbulent times, there will be always challenges, something new may come up. But then it is the vision of the management, vision of the leaders that has to sail through. And it is not only the management, from top to bottom, if the vision flows, then organization sustains. If there is a disconnect between top and bottom, it cannot work on. On a short term, it can work on, but for long term, it has to sustain. Just like what happened with L N T, it sustains from top to bottom or Amun from top to bottom, that need to be considered. Now, if we talk about airlines, aviation industry as a whole, domestic travel surged a lot. Post-pandemic, everyone across the globe started traveling because they all wanted to take passenger traffic rebounded in twenty twenty-two. When lot of restrictions are removed because remember even after COVID, certain parts of the countries in the world were not allowing travel. But when India opened travel, it gives lot of consumer confidence. And there is always a rise in travel appetite due to economic optimism. So, as I mentioned, last five years, due to the three billion, three trillion GDB story and due to the lot of FDA is coming in India, lot of opportunities and given in India, lot of rise in Indian SME market or IP markets. People started taking, they are exploring out and using this industry. So, as I mentioned earlier, hardly one percent would have traveled in India, out of hundred and forty crore people, there are very few people have traveled. But last five years, number has gone to eight to nine percent people have traveled. There are still many people who have not even There are still many people who have not even gone to our airport, but yes, the number is increasing significantly. Now. Economic drivers fueling aviation growth. Seven percent GDP which is being projected, which is considered to be the fastest growing GDP among Asia. When GDP starts growing up, there starts consumption, then services and manufacturing. Now that's a, it's a, it's a vicious circle. Once the salary started increasing, income started increasing, people started spending. People started spending, the demands started increasing. If you can match up the supply in that period, then economy sustains. If you cannot match up, then inflation occurs and that becomes a challenging part. Now, one of the biggest challenge in airlines industry would be, now. If there are only two service providers, there are only two companies, let's say Boeing and Airbus. And if the government announces that we are opening, let's say, how many smart cities government has announced? Any idea? How many smart cities if you think government has announced in a vision plan? Where at least they have identified this number of cities to become smart cities in India? Anybody has any thoughts? Any update on that? When the government vision is, they have identified hundred smart cities government started to plan, hundred. Thanks, you seem to are quite updated. So hundred smart cities government plan. Now, when smart cities are there, obviously they will be having airports. Now, it's, what does that means? So as airlines, I have hundred new opportunities, hundred new places where I could get a revenue. But to fly, can I go with my existing, existing fleet? Or I need to hire new planes? I need to hire new planes, I need to buy new planes, I need to lease new planes, whatever makes sense to me. Now to hire or buy new planes, but if the, if the supplies are only limited. Then if lot of people come and ask them, give me, give us planes, give us planes, will they give us discount? Or they will start increasing the prices because they know now demand is rising. So when supply is limited and demand is more, price will be, reduce or price will be increased. It's a demand of law and supply, price will be increased. So that becomes a challenge and, and that might not be able to. Working class population, as I mentioned, now would not like to save, save time, would not like to save cost and on the cost of time. They would like to save their time at the expense of. Cost. They will always like to, where if there is an option of lower flight time and longer duration of. By road, bus, train, they will prefer flight. The more disposable incomes that is getting increased, more increased travel demand. In fact, with the, with the new tax regime, when you are allowing upward health and relax and people are getting tax-free. Up to that income, more and more travel demands will happen and more and more foreign travel will happen. And that's why people will have spending. Now, as I mentioned, the tier two and tier three cities, there's, there will be new growth hubs. And why there will be new growth hubs? Because. So. No, when you talk of any state, not all state has. A, as airports, in that state, the capital will have a airport. And two or three big cities in that state where a lot of travel happens either because of business or because of tourism. So take example of, of Jaipur, Rajasthan. So in Rajasthan, we have an airport in Jaipur. Then we will have a airport at Udaipur for tourism, Chutpur for tourism. So these are the two prominent places where you have a airport. There are other places where. There is a demand of airport which is coming like Kota, Kishan Gadi got last two years back. So there are places where airports are in pipeline. So no, but not all cities have airports in Rajasthan. But where you identify, let's say Bikan Air or let's say any other city which supposed to be smart city. There will be a travel either for business purpose or for the purpose of tourism. At that time, we would be requiring. Airports and travel fees. This will be a huge opportunity for, this will be a huge opportunity for. Airlines. Now, apart from that. What is one of the biggest expenses? Uh, what is one of the biggest expenses which they can try to control? So let's say Boeing is one of the expense, flying plane, fuel is one of the expenses. Can we control fuel expenses? Probably no. Fuel expenses cannot be controlled. If from, going from Delhi to Mumbai, you need to spend thousand liter. Oil, it has to go there, you cannot save it. Till, till planes do not fly on solar fully, uh, and even if it fly on solar. Do you think as a customer, you will be willing to take risk? But let me fly on solar plane. Whatever, if the clouds come and the solar does not heat properly, may or may not be, so there has to be altering. So fuel as, as this point of time cannot be controlled. Do we know that, do we know that there is a parking charges I need to pay? As a, let's say I am an ABC Airlines company and I have hundred planes. In the night, all planes do not flow, right? So I need to park somewhere, I need to put into the airport hangar. Does airport authorities allow me free to park there or they charge money from me? What do you think? There is nothing free in this world, everybody will charge, so airport authorities is charged. Does all airport authorities in India charge at the same price or it differs? If I park in Mumbai, price will be different. If I park in Delhi, price will be different. If I park in Jaipur, price will be different. Or it is same? What do you think? It is differ, it differs and there comes a, a huge planning by respective airline companies. To see which, which hangar has the lowest cost. So they plan their, their schedule like this, that you, you, at the end of the night, when the last flight is supposed to land. It goes to that place where there is a lowest cost, like in case of J four, there is a lowest cost. So lot of airlines park their planes here and then next, in the first early morning flight, you will go from Jaipur. So for, for example, you will see first flight from Jaipur to Delhi at five o'clock and second flight from Ja- Delhi to Jaipur at six o'clock coming from Delhi to Jaipur. So this kind of, this kind of smartness or management needs to be done by a person who is man- making the cash flows. Now, the more two and tier three cities will come, this will be more cheaper also. So then you need to plan. So I'll give you just, uh, out of context to make things understand. Now, now, now in, in, in UP. Due to Ayudhya development, it has become a hub for travel. Now, a lot of people are taking, taking religious tourism. So I have a lot of my NRA friends who are coming from abroad. And they land to India and then they look for one flight to go to nearby Lucknow. So that they can cover Ayudhya, Varanasi, Kashi all three together and have a trip. Similar like this, many other avenues will open where people like to go to those places nearby that airport and can do that. So this becomes a huge opportunity to find where we have. But now, when I am going for two ties and three ties cities. Can I charge heavy prices there or I need to initially give very low prices? What do you think? And I'm talking for two types, three types cities where the income level may not be that high. Or respective citizens staying there. If you remember, I don't know how, I'm sure many of you not be aware at the time, have you heard a company called Air Deccan? Air Deccan? That used to, that, that actually started, that actually started the mass movement of flying. And so you can just Google whenever you get time, Air Deccan introduced a scheme of flying at one rupee. Now, if you got a message, flying ticket at one rupee, would you be tempted to book the ticket? Yes, no, maybe? What do you think? So just to give you numbers, normally the flight from Jaipur to Mumbai, because I was in Mumbai, article should be in Mumbai. So I used to travel by train and the train used to cost six hundred rupees from Jaipur to Mumbai. Well, take it, take a two o'clock train in, in Saturday, uh, in Saturday, uh, Sunday afternoon, two o'clock. Train in daytime and next day morning, eight o'clock, it will reach Borivali. And my office was in Shivaji Padgadhar, so by nine thirty, ten, I would have reached office. This was costing six hundred rupees. Now, if you get a message, book a flight at one rupees. First of all, I'll say it's a, it's a scam, it cannot happen, too good to be, sounds too good to be true, so it cannot be real. But what if you just click and the seat was coming at one rupee? But then, so the flight was actually at one rupee. But then the airline, Air Deccan will say, okay, five hundred rupees for airport development charges because airport will charge. The security guards coming at your airport, they want to do frisking, the government charges for that, so CSF charge and all. Nine nine nine, so the entire flight was coming at nine nine nine. One rupee was charged by Air Deccan, remaining was charged by government authorities and that was clearly mentioned in the bill and. Now, what do you think? Will I take nine ninety-nine flight, which is just costing me one and a half hours? I'll take Sunday, I take Monday morning flight at six thirty from Jaipur, reach by eight o'clock in Mumbai. And I'm sure it's no brainer again, I would like to take that flight because. I am getting chance to spend my family eight, nine hours more. So from, from morning, from two o'clock afternoon to ten PM in the night, I could stay. So this becomes, this becomes a bait to start. If you keep full price, today the price is five, six thousand rupees from Jaipur to Mumbai, today. People can do that, but when it started, if you give high price, people will know. So you need to give low price. Now, to give a low price, my airline has to be, my, the fleet has to be low budget. I cannot put a Boeing there, I cannot put a Airbus there, then I can, then I need to put eighty fly- planes. You know, you would have seen the small planes which carries forty, fifty people only. Just like, look like a glider, gladiators. So these are small planes, there only you can make money, you know, you cannot put full, full-blown claim there. Government is pushing infrastructure now. Now, understand from a business perspective. If I fly from Ja- Delhi to Mumbai, I will get hundred passengers a day, okay? Let's say government starts a flight, uh. Delhi to Ranchi, so Ranchi is becoming a, let's say, new smart city, they say, let's fly from Delhi to Ranchi. There I may get twenty passengers a day. Do you think I would be keen to open there? What do you think? Do you think I would be keen to open, fly there generally as airlines? Answer, we know, I may not like to go there because I will see that I may not make enough money by flying there for twenty people only. Just like me, do you think other airlines will also think the same? Every businessman will think the same. Then nobody, nobody will ever go for low, low traffic airlines route. So that means they will never grow. Then what happens? Then government puts condition, okay? So the government will put a condition and that's where government condition comes in, okay? So the government will say to all the airlines, okay? Those of you who fly from, from Delhi to Ranchi. I will give them parking free in Ranchi for next one year. I will give you one more profitable route at a discounted price. So the government will say, okay, you take a button from Delhi to Ranchi. I will give you one extra slot from flying, flying to Delhi to Mumbai at a subsidized price, so you can compensate and make money. This example not only works in airlines, it also works in many industries in India, like for example, banks. Why do you think private bank will go and open a branch in village? Because R B A mandates, if you want to take a license to open a branch in metro city. First, we need to open a branch in non-metro city, otherwise, how the holistic development will happen of whole India? People will only go where the money is making, where there is a huge mass. So small areas will never be developed like this. So that's why government push comes in and they mandate hit ahead. So, every government is, the, the government is modernizing and it is not only the current government. Every government who will come and who has come in the past would always like to expand on airport infrastructure. Because then only, then only you can connect respective cities to the rest of the world. So as I mentioned, because of new hundred smart cities, the airport authorities, Aviation Ministry. Has a target of getting hundred new airports by twenty twenty-eight. Now. For smaller destinations, they are having a regional connectivity policy, as I mentioned. For Ranchi, Ranchi or let's say Ayudhya, Ayudhya to Lucknow, Lucknow to Kashi, these small, small cities. They will put ATIs in some schemes so that people open more there. Like if you go to, those of you go to a holy trip to Vaishnava Devi Jay, there is a helicopter services started. Earlier, it was not there, earlier anybody used to go by, by walk or by using khuchas and horses. But then last, they, they, they realized there is a opportunity. They can start helicopter services, the government started a Pawan Hans helicopter services and people started paying. So if those who have the budget, they would like to pay and, and those who cannot travel for whatever personal reasons, physically, they will take that. Now, this becomes a huge challenge. We are expecting hundred airports. And we expect in next twenty years, four thousand aircrafts are needed in India. Now. This is, this is a, a vehicle which cannot be just. Do repair and maintenance every year and can get up and running for thirty, forty years. Because being a public carrier. Lives of people are at risk, government is very strict on safety mechanism. And because of the safety mechanism, there is a rigorous policy of changing the aircraft after thirty years. Even though you would have dented, painted, you have put a lot of overhauling, but the government do not think the life would extend. And if it is a, so there are different parts, it's a, just like India sixteen, P P E, we have a component accounting. So certain parts are depreciated at a higher rate, like rotors, blades, fans. They are depleted at a much higher rate rather than bodies which is a different rate. So because of limited number of suppliers, getting these will be a challenge. Now, what KG Airlines have thought of? Now. There is, there are two ways. Either, so, take, I am taking a different context. If you want to open a restaurant, there could be two strategies. Either make a high-end restaurant. Where the prices are exorbitant, not everybody will, will walk in. Because the price itself is so high that the tip which is expected to be left would be my normal meal expenses hypothetically. So either you can make a restaurant where the prices are very high, where less number of people, but high volume will be there. Or you could make a restaurant or a, or a dhaba or a tapri or a small-sized cafe or small-sized restaurant. Like a jumbo vada pav or burger cake or anything with a low value item. Where, where demand will be higher, but the sale price will be low. Now, which model you think? Will you choose if you like to do a business? Which category you think you like to do? Any quick thoughts? Which strategy you like to choose between these two if you like to open a restaurant? A food joint, I have given you two choices, when you go for a high-end restaurant. Or a low price. Again, nothing is wrong, nothing is right. So remember one important point. Strategy is not like one size fits all, it may work, it may not work. But generally, generally in a low end, your chances of not working is very, very limited. Because, because of mass, mass consumers, consumption we have in India. Whatever you do, it will at least sell, because when the price is low, people will still try. But if the price is high, do you think you will go and try? Probably no. Then you have a niche class, very limited margin, and I am not saying someone who opens a niche restaurant does not work, no, it will work. But then the number is very limited and then the cash flow issue will always be there. If you don't have a deep pockets, cash flow starts burning, the sal- the salary of chef would be burning your pocket. But in case of low cost, you can easily work out. Similarly, in airlines, you have two choices. Similarly, in airlines, you have two choices. Either make a fancy airlines, which is high-cost airlines, luxury seats, every seat has video games, you know. Movies, TVs, you give them film, seven course meal and that. I don't know, anybody would have travelled to Air India a long time back or ask any of your family members who have travelled to Air India or Kingfisher Airlines. The kind of hospitality they used to give at that point of time is beyond imagination, huge hospitality in terms of food and all. So you have two choices, make that full-blown airlines like a five-star airlines. Or work like a low-cost airlines where we will not give you anything, even the water bottle I will not give you, I can give you a glass of water, but if you ask me, give me a water bottle, I'll charge you. Which one would you like to do? Again, choice is yours. K G Airlines thought, let us better to be go with a low-cost carrier. Now, why a low-cost carrier is good? Because we need to always understand. When I am selling something, should I sell from my point of view or I need to understand the customer's point of view? What do you think makes sense? What do you think makes sense? When I am selling something as a seller, it should be always from customer end. Because if you do not understand his, his thought process, you can never become a good salesperson. My product may be the best, but if it is not required by customer, if customer do not value it, it has of no value. Similarly, when I am selling a low-cost airlines, I need to understand, when I am selling airline tickets, I need to understand. Now think of a scenario, I gave one customer choice. Delhi to Mumbai, eight thousand rupees flight. It has thirty kg bags, it has full meal, it has everything, that's the price I am giving, eight thousand. And in my airlines, I am giving customer, Delhi to Mumbai, four thousand rupees ticket. If you want to take fifteen kilo bag free, fifteen to thirty kilo bag if you want, pay thousand rupees extra. If you want to book a meal, pay thousand rupees extra. If you want to watch, if you want to have other facilities, pay five hundred rupees extra. If you want to have recliner seats, pay five hundred extra. Now, in which option, I have given the power to customer? And you all will agree, you only feel, you only make decisions when you feel you have the power or you feel good when you have the power, right? So I have given, I have empowered the customer in low-cost airlines. So what I told in low-cost airlines, look to the customer, look, my costing to fly from Delhi to Mumbai is four thousand rupees which I want to charge from you. Now, if you want to have more prills, more percussants, so if you want to have a dinner, lunch, okay, pay extra. If you want to have more luggage, pay little bit extra. This gives a sense of choice to the customer. Now, I don't mind paying, buying for lunch if I know that, okay, I have a right to buy. But where I have given eight thousand rupees flight, everything in it, what if even if I don't want to have lunch? What if I permit my luggage is only five kilos, it's just a day trip, I am going from morning to work and coming back in the evening, I have no luggage. Then I feel that why I am getting charged for more, so that becomes a low-cost thought process and that's why how low-cost airlines sells. Not only this, there's a very good airlines, you need to read that, those like to read on strategy, Southwest Airlines in U S. So in U S, after the COVID. When every lot of airlines started filing for bankruptcy, this airlines started making money. Because they started with low-cost airlines, they said we will not charge anything, we will only charge for the travel costs to survive. If you want anything extra, pay more and people realize that, okay, this is the cost they are charging. So this way, if you go with low-cost airline carrier, so this K G Airlines thought, we will market ourselves to the lowest-cost airlines. So that everyone can afford us, people can take it, if I want to travel, think about us because we are in budget. Focus on digital transformation, fleet rationalizations and. Regional routes. Now, one of the most important things, which most of the airlines and almost all businesses, we have gone on digital transformation. Now, earlier if I need to find out what is the time of a flight, I'll call the customer care of this airlines, customer care will pick up. And then she will ask me route, he or she will ask me what are the routes and it will take long. Nowadays, these are all automated. If I need to find out the flight time, I'll call the respective customer care number and the, the automated response will come. Tell me what you want me to know, if you want to know about flight bookings, press one. So it will come, so if you want to give me a flight number automatically and it will tell that. So a lot of manpower got saved, lot of salary which were putting on additional staff, which is admin staff got saved. So this kind of digital transformation, if you are not updated, you are not on tech, tech, you are out of the business. Now fleet rationalization need to be done. Now. There are, there are flights like A thirty. Airbus, Boeing or eighty. What do you think is good for a business? Shall I have four kinds of aircrafts? One A thirty, one three thirty bus, one Boeing seven seven, one Boeing seventy seven? Or from a, from a commercial sense, I need to have only one kind of plane. So one standard of plane, any thoughts? All are good or one is good, what do you think makes sense? Any vague idea? Which makes sense, to have multiple airlines, as airlines, what should I go for? Different type of planes in my inventory or I should have only one type of plane in my inventory? There are pros and cons of both, so there cannot be a right answer immediately, we cannot say this is right. But then when I, when I weigh both the options, one option will come out very clearly that this is better. Okay, different. Now, what are the challenge in being different only one, so we have got to answer and that's, that's good, so thought process should be there, you know, there is nothing right and nothing wrong. Prashant, would you like to elaborate why one will be better because Sunil has a view that different is better? And again, both can have a different views and nothing, both can be right at same point of time. If you like to speak, you can unmute or if you like to write, whatever is okay with you. Language is not a career, not a question at all, what makes, cost cutting is focus, okay? So, so can you more elaborate why one will help in cost cutting? I know, your answer is right. Strategically, what you are saying makes sense, it should be only one. But how can I cut cost by one? Can be more elaborate on that? Answer is right, thought process is right. Now, Sunil, can you, can you counter Prashant's view that why having a different will be better for the organization? What could be thought process?
Sir, it will provide the option to give us services at different level of that requirement.
Okay, now, just, so again, these are, as I have mentioned, both could be right answers, but tell me as an organization, as an organization. So there is a policy, there is a policy that if I am flying Boeing seven three seven, okay, if I am a pilot of a Boeing seven three seven. Do you think they will give me to fly A T R? The same pilot, can they fly A T R? I am talking, I am asking for legally, legally airlines permit, they will not permit. But they say, you know, remember if you are driving, if you are driving, let's say Thar or Scorpio. And then I will tell you to drive I ten. Both are different, right? The wheel balancing and all, control of car would be different, a Kaduji will be different. So here it becomes a challenge to get a new pilot for different kind of plane, that is one. Second. Let's say I am flying a flight from, let's say, Delhi to Mumbai and that flight is Boeing three, Boeing seven three seven, that's a flight. Now for some reason that flight malfunctions, okay? Now I have another flight, A T R. Can that A T R fit? Answer is no. But what if I have all planes, only one size, then next plane can immediately make up? Third, and again we are talking loud, we are thinking loud and we are thinking what the, what the airlines would have taken this decision when they would have thought of having only one fleet. What will happen in, how many number of spare parts I need to keep? If I have four type of airline, four type of airplanes, different types of airplanes, my number of spare parts holding will be more or less? Working capital will be impacted or no? So it will be impacted, right? For different airlines and do I need to keep parts at only one location in Mumbai? For each airport, I need to keep spare parts. For each airport, I need to keep spare parts, Delhi, Mumbai, wherever all airports, wherever all my flights will fly. I need to keep a buffer of spare parts because if something goes wrong at, in a plane, immediately it can be rectified by getting those spare parts. It cannot happen that I am flying from Delhi to Mumbai and in Mumbai my plane got malfunction. And the airline will say, sir, the spare part is lying at Delhi. We will send a flight to get that, that spare part, that cannot work it, right? Because of, because time is the essence. So that becomes a huge challenge in terms of inventory. Third, the training costs will be more and more in different planes. The more different planes, the more different training I need to give to different individuals. So that's why it becomes a challenge and that's why the example of Southwest I gave, Southwest Airlines have made a policy. That we will put only one airlines, one plane at all places. Now, again, what is the rationale for putting this policy? If I am having a small narrow plane, a small narrow plane which can take hundred people a time. I can fly fourteen hours a day of that plane, considering the, the flying time, the cleaning time and everything. But if I have a plane which can carry hundred and eighty passengers, it's a bigger plane, it cannot go more than nine to ten hours. So I lose my four hours of flying because, because of the bigger size of the plane, the bigger inspection takes, cleaning takes time. Each parts need to be inspected, that takes time because safety is first paramount. So therefore they say, if you have multiple fleets, it becomes a challenge, so they go on fleet rationalization. We will discuss more on fleet, that, because that is the biggest challenge in airlines industry. And regional, as I mentioned, you need to plan regional routes, it cannot happen that you are, so that's why you will see a lot of connecting flights. If you want to go to Pune, so there will be one flight going from Jaipur to Mumbai to Pune or Jaipur to Pune, Nagpur or Pune. So that in a connecting route, they can always save time and cost. We need to leverage, so K G Airlines decided that now the emerging cities are coming up. And early mover will always get advantage. So if you can start leveraging the growth for emerging cities and start having a fleet, we will get, make more money. Poise to the right of aviation way, so as I mentioned, from twenty twenty five onwards, again, the, the scenario is changing. The number of first-time flyers have increased a lot and keep continuing. This company founded in nineteen ninety-six, registered on N S C. Low-cost carrier is the strategy. And again, as I mentioned, as I mentioned again, it is, it does not mean that this low-cost strategy can work in all businesses. Answer, we know. Take classic example of iPhone. Will, will, will you have bought iPhone, it would have been very cheap? Probably no. Would you have bought Gucci bag, Armani suit, had it been cheap? Answer would be no. So some, some business work on low-cost strategy, some business work on high-cost strategy. There is a very good, there is a very good interview by Gucci CEO. It is available on BBC website, Gucci CEO. He was asked, how do you price it? And that was the honest interview by him, so the BBC interviewer asked the Gucci guy, how will you price a, a bag? So he says, we manufacture a bag and then we send it to top twenty, thirty H N I's in U K. What are you know, the richest in U K? And we tell, so our, and I am giving rough numbers, don't take exact numbers, I am just giving a, a number. So they say, we tell to the public, so our manufacturing costs, let's say, hundred pounds, let's say hundred. We put a figure of five hundred pounds on that and send to them and ask their review, give me your reviews. He says out of thirty, approximately twenty-five will come back and say, if it is so cheap. That is just a five hundred pounds, where everybody could offer it or buy it, then we will not buy. Then he says, then we make it two thousand five hundred pound and then they buy it. So, it's not that low cost will always sell, even the same product does not sell, a high-cost strategy. So high-cost carriers may also work somewhere and I'm sure. So one of, one of the famous Yani, one of the famous piano scientists, one of the famous pianists. He was, his show was there in London and for playing piano in one of the Royal Opera of London. Where the tickets were sold of thousand pounds, that was the price of the ticket, thousand pound, he was, he was supposed to show in the evening. In the morning, he changes get up, he went to the London railway station. And sat there and started playing piano free of cost. Nobody stayed, paid attention to him, people listen, pass by, nobody even stand for him, nobody paid anything to him and he was just playing. In the night when he came and he said this, today morning when I was giving for free this piano, people were not paying attention. But the moment I am charging thousand pounds, I have five hundred audience sitting at me, listening only to me. So low-cost carrier may not work always, but for this airlines it is working and again as I mentioned, because, because flying itself is a luxury. And to make people habitual to it, you need to go into low cost, then only people will come to you. The founder, obviously the name changed, this company has two shareholdings, one Indian shareholding and one Singapore shareholding. So we got, we got foreign investments, FEMA, forty-one percent, so as I mentioned, forty-nine percent is the maximum limit. Can this limit be extended if I request to government of India? What do you think? So as I mentioned, as of now in FEMA, it is forty-nine percent. Can this limit be extended if I go and approach government of India? Any thoughts? So, interestingly, in Air India, in the Air India, government allowed it to be hundred percent foreign investment. Only with the one condition, so the, so as I mentioned, forty-nine percent is the limit, right? But the government allow hundred percent, only exceptional basis in Air India. With the condition that if the investor has been an Indian. Now he has become an N R I, non-resident, parents of, or a child of Indian parents, then he can take it. So if you are, if you are having a lineage of India, if you are Indian, born in India or your fathers are from India and you settle outside. If you are N R I, you can still get hundred percent, but you should have a roots in India. But still nobody came and only Tata Group have taken that Air India. This company started in nineteen ninety-six, ordered air buses in nineteen ninety-nine, first aircraft received two thousand. It is still very early, very fast, getting an aircraft in one year is a significant achievement. So, despite the order fifty, we got first, because it takes time, it's, as I mentioned, limited suppliers, so it is not that you just order and. It's not like Amazon where you order and tomorrow you get a delivery in your home store, it takes long time. But, and that's why people, people, people predict their demand, so that they can book now. Just go and see Boeing, they have lot of continent, they have lot of capital commitments they have taken, they have lot of advances they have taken from customers. Because people have given their advances for booking. Their first flight fly from New Delhi to Mumbai and why every airline who starts their first preferences always to take Delhi to Mumbai route? But that is the most profitable route, you will not incur a loss because every day the flying people is continuous. Other states, you, you may have people flying daily or not, but Delhi to Mumbai, Delhi will find people flying, that's why they prefer first. Then their fleet increased from fifty to two seventy, that's the aircraft they take. Then twenty-three, the additional forty aircraft they acquired. As, just before I go for, I might skip an example before I mention. And let's say I am K G Airlines, okay? Where I will make more money by flying in India or flying abroad? Where do you think I can make more money? By flying in India or by flying in abroad? What do you think? Again, we all will agree, dollar income is always better and higher, so if I can earn in dollars. If a company can fly customers abroad or in travel tourism, I will have more money. So this company wanted to go abroad. Now. Is it, is it easy to get a license to go abroad or there are some conditions by airline authorities, Aviation Ministry? So airline authority says, you should have a flying experience of five years, then only we will allow you to travel abroad. Then only we will allow you to sell international domestic. Then only we will allow you to travel abroad, then only we will allow you to sell international domestic international route tickets. So I am giving example of King Fisher. King Fisher started, first year they went domestic and now they wanted to take exposure of chill. Take exposure of international. Now what do you think? Will you wait for five years because five is the requirement? How could you strategize? How could you advise your company, your promoter? That okay, this is the condition, let me give you some idea to overcome this. Any thoughts? How do you think? What you will do? So this is your first year of incorporation, it is the first year you open airlines. You're flying domestic and you're doing very good in domestic, but you realize domestic. Bill the per ticket passenger cost in domestic is let's say five thousand rupees. But in international, a minimum ticket would be twenty five thousand rupees, flying from Delhi to Dubai or Delhi to London, whatever number. Now you are trying to go on a international business. Regulation says it cannot be less than, you need to be in existence five years. How will you overcome this? Any thoughts? I know you will say, sir, to take five days experience, it will at least take five days experience of the company. And that's what, when you read the law. Will client pay you to read the law or will client pay you to read between the laws? If it is that simple, client will not pay any consultant, right? As a consulting, as an advisor, my job comes, how to find a way again without breaking the law? You're not talking of breaking the law. Within the within the four corners of the law, how can you do it? Anyone can. No, Sunni, but the issue is Sunni, I I appreciate your thought process and it makes sense, but what the what the condition was. The company should have an experience of five days, the company. So pilot and crew, I can always have extra, type with international company, okay, you are going there, somewhere you are going there, okay, type with international company, okay. What if? If I can do a merger with a company in India or abroad, in India or abroad, who has an experience of five years? So first time in in the history of aviation, a reverse merger happened. And I say reverse merger means. King Fisher was the most profitable company and most backed up company, a lot of funds. Air Deacon, Air Deacon was a loss making company and a smaller company in size as compared to King Fisher. But who merged into who? Did Air Deacon merge into King Fisher or King Fisher merge into Air Deacon? What do you think would have happened? To comply with this five years, so I want to take the international license at anyhow. This is where I know I can make money. My existence is still one year, but there is a company which is less in size, less in volume to me. But they are already in business for last nine, ten years. Can I go and do golden handshake and reverse merger? And that's what they did. So they did the reverse merger, King Fisher merged into Air Deacon. And now that's a smartness. But later on, can I change my name? Can Air Deacon change its name? That now onwards we will be called as King Fisher after merger, possible? Is it possible, not possible? As far as the companies are, nineteen fifty six, now two thousand thirteen. Much possible, you can always change and that's what happened. After the merger, they got their name approval changed. And the Air Deacon which was the original company now was known as King Fisher because the brand of King Fisher much grew at that time. So you need to know the law and you need to know how you can support in managing the law, not by breaking it. So again, I mentioned, never ever take shortcuts for giving any opinion. Because when the things goes good, nobody questions. But when the things turns bad. Promoter, everyone regulator will be after you that why have you not looked into it? So that's the way strategize they did that. Similarly, this company has also done certain arrangements to go international. We are present at revenue scale, if you talk of this company, we are having three hundred ten fleet size. Currently they run across forty nine cities among twenty five states. Annually they serve ninety million passengers. On a stock exchange, their share trades at headquarters in Gujarat, Gurugram, Haryana. So it is, the board operates from the the Gurugram office. Board supervises, directs all the key departments. So one of the key departments are H R because to hire a experienced pilot and crew. Now, is pilot is pilots easy to find, difficult to find or? Easily available or randomly available or or. See, there there's a this is a limited specialized knowledge, not everybody has it. So there's a, the pool is limited. Now, if you recall the starting part of the session, Deepak sir has mentioned. The company can either open a, open a academy to teach flying. Now. The airlines has to pay per hour flight or per salary depending on flying hours you pay to the pilot. So you do have pay the pilot per hour flight or whatever the terms they agree. Now. Let's say there is a flight of Jaipur to Delhi, thirty five minutes flight. And there's a flight from Jaipur to, let's say Chennai. Three and a half hours flight. So one is thirty five minutes flight, Jaipur to Delhi and one is three and a half flights, Jaipur to Chennai. Can I say, okay, in Jaipur to Chennai, three and a half hours flight, let me put two pilots, one pilot and one co-pilot. And Jaipur to Delhi, it's it's a very small flight, thirty five minutes, and let me put one pilot. Will that work or mandatory I need to put two pilots even if the flight time is thirty five minutes? I'm trying to save cost. So is it possible, not possible? What do you think? What do you think airlines industry, aviation industry, aviation ministry will say? That it's a thirty five minutes flight, go or do that? So it is not possible. So as you are right, government will not permit. Any reason why government will not permit? Any reason why government will not permit? Any vague reason why government will not, safety. Because you never know what can happen to a pilot, even the flight time is thirty five minutes. But if something goes wrong to him and we never forecast, we cannot predict and God forbid if something happens to the pilot. Entire through entire passengers' life will be gone away and that's where government cannot take. So this becomes a cost, it becomes a heavy cost and I'm sure you you should be aware. Even the rules is, when there are two pilots, right, one pilot and one co-pilot. And if one pilot, one pilot, one of the pilots want to go to attend nature calls, so you want to use restroom, washroom. One air hostess, one steward has to come into the cockpit and sit, then only he can leave. At a at one point of time due to safety regulations, it cannot be only one man. Pilot in the cockpit. Because that's the kind of safety aviation industry is very, 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 very finicky about it and it is very good for travelers only because. They say even for a minute, one, we have two co-pilots, one pilot went out for washroom. And then suddenly if something happens in that period to the main pilot who is driving, will have a issue flying the plane. So they will send one, someone from crew member to sit inside and put a care of that. Now, having said that, having two pilots, will that involve cost? How can we reduce cost? So one of the way of reducing cost could be. Hire one senior crew, which is a senior experienced pilot. Then you have a airlines academy. And in airlines academy, uh. Can I give, can I teach someone to just fly by giving lectures or by giving a simulation machine? That you just take a video game, see how do you fly, can we do that? Or I need to have actual given flag, I need to give him a real plane to fly. I need to give him a real plane to fly. So just like, we have interns, right? In our C A, we also start with interns. And that becomes a future sales. Similarly in airlines, they also have interns pilots. So they've become interns, you need to have minimum nine hundred hours of flying or setting for each plane, each kind of. Creed, there's a difference flying hours. So if it is an A T R, you can go for five hundred hour flying, if it is a bigger plane, nine hundred hours of flying. That actual flying experience you need to have. So airlines, that's why a lot of airlines open aviation academy or they tie with aviation academy. Take their interns at a at a at an economical cost because when you are interned. The flying company will not pay you full salary because they say we are teaching. Now, when 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 you computer us, then they commit you that okay, once you complete your nine hundred hours of respective number of hours. You work with us and then we will teach you, then we will give you consumer salary. So this becomes uh incentive for the learner or the intern to work for that airlines. So this company decides how to be. And again, just on a on a lighter note, just one lighter note. Many airlines have a condition that the crew weight will not exceed seventy five K Gs. Any idea why is that? Many airlines have this condition. Any idea why Singapore Airlines has sixty K G? Uh Asian like like India Airlines have seventy five K G. Any idea why this condition? That they should not have seventy five K G, more than seventy eight K G weight. Physical weight, body weight should not be more than seventy five K G if you want to be a fit crew member. Any idea why is that? Why some ten airlines have this policy? It is not a mandatory policy by aviation ministry. Many airlines have made this internal policy. Any idea why they would have done that? What is the logic of this? Does it impact my fuel cost? Yes, no, maybe? In some sense. The most spare capacity, no, no, I am talking of my body weight. So let's say if I am eighty K G's weight. They will say Sumit, you cannot be a crew member in that because you are above seventy five K G. Because the more weight you have, it impacts your, it impacts your mileage, it impacts your fuel cost. And that's why a lot of, you just see the airlines policy, internal policy, that's why they put. That is also one of the reason why they prefer to have low weight in terms of physical, uh the baggage's weight also. But the more weight you take, the more impact it has on, it has on fuel cost. This is also one of the reason why, you will see two reasons, why? Why you will see majority of the airlines will always have white color? You know, the color of the planes are always white, majority will always find white. Why not you find multicolors like yellow, orange, red, black? Because. The white color absorbs heat and the more white color it has, the less fuel consumption will happen. The more heat you have, the more fuel consumption happen. One of the reasons why a lot of travel happens by night, international travel happens by night. Because in night, there is a less heat and thereby less consumption of fuel. So there are various logics which strategist devise. Uh and before I go to technical part, let me take you one. Now. What is the role of? Uh strategy maker marketer. So as I mentioned, I give an example of. Mister Anand Meindra getting a, getting a um. Getting a handwritten card had a huge impact on him and as an airlines branding. Now think for a customer like you and me, for a customer like you and me, how do the companies work to make us feel better? Now, I'm not talking of today, I'm talking of few years back. When you put search something, so let's say I'm searching flight from Jaipur to Mumbai. And let's say I went to any Yatra, Make My Trip or any Ease My Trip, any aggregator website. Or even I went to Indigo, Air Li- Air India, Spizer, any website. I went there and I'm searching Jaipur to Delhi or Jaipur to Mumbai. And if the internet used to be slow at the time, remember, have you seen at the time where the. Site was circle, circle, circle was coming, processing, processing was coming and customer used to get fatter, right? Because at the time internet capacity was not fast or it was taking time. So a lot of people got irritated. Then what did they started doing? Because you know, you you understand the frustration comes when you are trying to search something and it is, it is taking more than. Uh three, four seconds because now now we are not, we lost the patience, right? Who wait for even ten seconds. So people are getting frustrated with the with the with the time the aggregator was taking to, to find a fare. So then what they change the strategy, what they change the strategy? Any idea what they change the strategy? Any vague thoughts? And again, I'm touching these things because these are not to be taught in courses, these are a marketing. Uh standard, we need to explain that, how to make feel good customer. So there is a problem, we know it cannot be changed. So I cannot change my two fifty six M D speed to five hundred twelve, that's not possible. So my speed cannot be changed. Now how to handle this? So instead of showing round circle, 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 they started showing now. We are searching best fare for you. Now you think yourself as a customer. If I see something, I am searching the best cheapest fare for you, the most efficient fare for you. Will I say no, no, do jaldi jaldi or I say aja, thik hai bhai, take your time, I understand. Up search, search karo, time lagega. Put yourself in that shoes and this and this is a mark, this is a case study. That how come just one sentence changed the mindset of the customers? So this is the customer delight. Where you used to get frustrated by that, you customer delight. Uh and again, I'm giving examples from practically what happened. At the time when internet used to get shut off, you know, a lot of time back when you serve these lines and internet was not working. You're suddenly working on some file and internet got conked off, then people used to get frustrated. Then they started giving a dinosaur game. So till the time internet is not coming, you play dinosaur game or that. Anyway, you would have played the dinosaur game where. Till the time internet was not working and I'm talking of ten years back where internet was a uh difficult commodity at that time. So all this strategy makes people work better for you because something you cannot change, you need to change the way people look at it. That's what you need to do as that was you need to advise. So they started devising two strategic models. When the board was sitting, the board decided. In the board meetings, we have two models we can evaluate. Either become a full service airlines, which we discussed just two minutes back. Give a premium offerings, give a recliner chair, give a uh uh give a five star meal. You know, if you flying and stay the lunch is coming from Taj, you know, mid airlines, you will feel, you are, you'll feel rich. Or we go with low cost airlines, just give a competitive pricing, don't give any frills and say. After this, whatever you charge is extra, when you do that. So K G L I's decided to adopt low cost airlines focusing on domestic civil aviation sector. Now. If I, if I. If I'm giving a low cost. And then let's say, let's say travel time from Jaipur to Chennai is let's say three point five hours, let's say. Do you think in three point five hours, without internet, I'll be feeling happy or I'll be little bit irritated? Or I'll be little bit un-uncomfortable? What do you think? Three and a half hours, your mobile is shut, books you do not read. Laptop does not give you comfort, passengers do not talk much, you know, unlike unlike train or bus when you travel. Can talk to passengers a lot, right? You agree? How many of you agree that when you travel by train or bus, you make more acquaintance than friends as compared to flying? As compared to flying, you don't find people much interacting generally. So, three and a half hours, if I stay alone, I'll be little bit uncomfortable. So what if, what if, if the airline offers me, if the airline offers me. Take wifi at three hundred rupees. Do you think I will take it on generally? What do you think? Because I'm not charging exorbitant price, I'm giving a normal price. And I'm giving a normal price, people will take, people will take. And that's what, and that's what, many of the, that's what many of the airlines has started giving. Giving wifi facilities and other facilities on plane at a very normal cost. So people start taking it. Because they realized that three and a half hours and I'm just giving a big example, think of flight of, think of a flight of. Delhi to London or Delhi to U S of fourteen hours flight. Without internet, you might feel uncomfortable. Like how long you will read books? So you need sometimes to connect to WhatsApp and all, whatever other things you feel. So they give a very low package of wifi, you can use that and that's why people's, people will buy more of these thrills than other activities. People can always travel lightweight, but when it comes to give a choice of wifi, they will happy to take it. So in the meeting, K G Airlines decided to adopt low cost career model because they think this is the way. They can get majority of the, majority of the work, majority of the customers can come in. And this model can give more value than higher to us. And why it is lower cross, lower cost, cost career will always with them? Even if I make a five star. Even if I make a five star air- airplane. The customers will not travel daily. So there is a limited set of people who will take business class or those, so that will be limited. But if it is a low cost airlines, I have a huge volume of population, alternate turnout will happening more and more. That will happen. So they decided their mission is connectivity, speed, reliability, making travel hassle free, affordable for our guests. The mo- the moment you say affordable for guests, people start buying it, it has to be hassle free. The vision is to be leader in the mission industry, giving the maximum connectivity in India. The more connected you are, the more booking chances of you. Purpose is be our guest, we can agree to your world, everybody wants to travel to meet their relatives, their family or their jobs. And we want a best experience. They say let us build customer loyalty. Customer loyalty can be built only by. As I mentioned, even a Bollywood star or any other star gives advertisement that this airlines is best, you will not travel. You will only travel, you will only begin the customer when it is affordable rates, when it is affordable rates. When you give on time performance. You will love only those flights where tho- those fly on time and close on time. You love those sessions that start on time and end on time. Because if you have attended joint at six thirty and I start at seven, you will not feel good. And if I end at ten o'clock, you will not feel good because you have given a time six thirty to nine thirty. So on time performance, anybody does in whatever part of the world is considered. As a student, as a, as a practitioner, you all need to understand. Commitment to time is something which we can always invite this quality. So I spent my ten years in uh M N Cs and I was told. If the meeting is at ten o'clock, when you reach at ten o'clock, you are five minutes late. So this as a professional, you need to be always before the time. Because reaching on time, meeting, you know, meeting the deadline is not my expectation. Beating the deadline is my expectation. So if, so you should be always be ahead of time so that you can always take the leverage. And the most important is hassle free and courteous services. The more hospitality you can shower, people will always remember how you treat them. If you treat them and that's why, that's just, so I, I travel very frequently to abroad at uh. Uh, uh, once in a month I travel to abroad, uh certain parts of the world for work purpose. Certain, you will be surprised. Certain airlines says. Their aristuses, even they are uh Arabs, even they are Africans, even they are British. They will say, and when I, when I am leaving the plane, they will say namaste to me. So they will not say goodbye, they know I am Indian, so they will treat me in my language, namaste. Why they do that? Because they were trained and why, what they were trained? That people connect more in their local regional language. You all will agree? If I, if you are, let's say from uh, from uh. From a, a regional language and I talk in regional language. You will connect with me more when, when I am giving a service provided to you. If I talk in fluent English, you can get impressed for me, you may get impressed from me, but will you get connected from me? You got the difference which I am trying to explain? Impressing a customer is different. Getting connected to a customer, let the connector connect to your heart to heart, that's a difference that comes on. How good hospitality you have given to him? And that's why a lot of, that's why you see a lot of airlines offer. Free wheelchair services for C A citizens above sixty or if you have medical emergency. Or in other parts of the airports, you give free golf cart ride. Because if you are not able to walk that much, you know, where the, where there are not escalators and where there is a huge distance from. Entry to the boarding gates, then these kind of services will keep you in mind. Specifically when uh, I will just give one more example. When I travel with my kids, my kids demand specifically one airlines because that airlines gives a. Gives a goodie bags for kids. So any kid who is on the plane, they give free goodie bags to the kids. As I mentioned earlier, nothing is free in this world, the cost is charged to me indirectly. But the kids love this so much that okay, they got sense of getting something. That being a kid, I am being respected, I am being rewarded, so I need to travel in the same airlines. So that's how you can only build loyalty by giving all this. As I mentioned, you cannot, you cannot build loyalty by advertisement, it has to be by experience only, that's the way. Now. What if I issue loyalty cards? If I issue loyalty cards, you know that uh reward points? You travel from Delhi to Mumbai, I will give you hundred points, you travel ten times, you get thousand points, I will give you one flight free. What are the pros and cons of this? So one of the ways to give loyalty points is, customer make loyal is giving loyalty points. That every time you fly, I will give you certain points to redeem. What are the good and bad points of this? Any thoughts? What do you think could make sense in this? Anything you can make out from this good and bad, what could it be? You think by the time we will come to that. So as I mentioned, why K G Airlines wanted to be a low cost airlines? Because they know hundred domestic airports are supposed to come. So they will plan to take. Planes, as I mentioned, plane they cannot buy, will take time, so they will start taking leasing from certain. To ensure connectivity. Whether you buy or lease, initially there will be a huge investment. Hundred crores, several hundred crore need to be put. Because when I am taking, when you buying, you pay upfront full money. When I am taking a lease, he will take security deposit, he will take certain amount of money in advance, certain rentals in advance. Certain deposits he will ask me, so that will be a huge cost. We always, we always invest thinking of future. Remember in business, you don't get valuations based on the past. Based on the past, people don't get paid money. People will pay money that. What you could do in future? Can you have in future? So as I mentioned, there is type of substitute is very less in future, very less. Except. Bullet trains, if you talk about, there will be nothing much. Given a choice between traveling from Delhi, Jaipur to Mumbai, I will not prefer road travel. Considering the, considering the hazards and time and cost involved and the discomfort. I may uh think of going to bullet train if it comes from Jaipur to Mumbai at a equal in time or near about time and the same price. But which is again, no, cannot be assumed from all routes. So that's why people invest money in future. But the challenges which K G Airlines is facing, where they think we are navigating headwinds. Supply chain disruption. Because of, we discussed this point, because of limited suppliers, Boeing and Airbus. My supply cannot match up the demand I am having. Rising costs multiple fronts. Can I? Offload all my cost to customers? Answer would be no. My salaries have to be increased every year. I need to increase, give certain inflation, certain increment to my employees every year. Certain costs are bound to rise every year. Can I increase my flight cost every time same time? Answer would be no. Because that becomes a huge challenge. Competitive constraints on pricing, that's the biggest problem. Let's say my shareholder is a foreign company. And this is Sumit, we are not bothered on making money, we just want to be the leaders in this industry. We want maximum people to fly on us. We don't make money for ten years, we are fine. But we want maximum people to fly. Then what I need to do? I will lo- lower my cost, lower my price. If I lower my price, other airlines have to naturally lower their price, which will there, they will be beating, they will be bleeding in red. That becomes a challenge because my constraint of pricing is. If you are charging same price, I need to charge the same price. I cannot have much difference. If you have seen flight bookings, if anybody of you travel and you do a search. Do you find very variance between different flights in India for same route or almost in the same range, generally in the same range? And I am talking of same time flights, it's not morning flight will be different, evening flight will be different. But if you are looking evening flight time of two, three airlines. Will you find too much variations or in the same range? What do you think? What do you think? You will always find in almost same range, not more, not more than five percent variation up and here and there. That part we need to keep in mind. Their margins are shrinking because of competition and caches are also shrinking. That's the challenge they faced. Because of aircraft availability and spare part availability, that becomes a challenge because they have different fleets. For a different fleets, they have a different spare parts requirement. And as I mentioned. At each airport, at each hangar, you need to keep spare part buffer. Because if plane gets, gets disrupted at one location. You need to serve immediately that location. If you say part is not there, it will come from Delhi or Mumbai after some time. It will irritate more the customers. Global aircraft supply disrupted post pandemic. Because of, so pandemic, many companies were shut down, those were making spare parts. Engines and critical components are not available and similarly happens with many other industries. Your expansion delayed. I have got a permission to fly from Jaipur to Delhi two times more in a day. But if I don't have. Projects, I cannot fly much. Many planes grounded due to inability of space. As I mentioned. In a cockpit itself, there are more than thousand parts which are relevant parts. Even if one part got damaged, the plane will be grounded. The law will not allow the flight. That's why it becomes huge challenge. This impacts operational bottlenecks, less flights, less flight means less income. Deployment capacity, delayed route. Fuel prices are also going up. Lease rentals. This lease rental will discuss shortly. True salary, high demand for pilots and crews. As I mentioned, you can, you cannot control fuel prices. If, if airlines, if O N G C says and B T C L says, I will sell hundred rupees liter, I need to pay hundred rupees liter. The only thing I can manufacture, the only thing I can control is hedging. I can have a hedging of fuel risk. If I am getting from dollars exchange, I can hedge that, that can be done. You know, I can buy a commodity of fuels and I can safeguard, that can be done. Since it is a price sensitive market and as I just mentioned, customer can flip in a minute. He will search price on your website, take a queue, immediately go to another website, take a queue and choose that. So flipping is not the challenge for him. Competitive market, ticket fare hikes are difficult. Code sharing agreements need to be done. So let's say if I want to fly from Jaipur to New York. I will have a flight from Jaipur to Dubai where I will stop. I will have a code sharing arrangement with somebody from Dubai to New York, that way it fly. So we observed there is a cash reserves, focus shift to cost efficiency, operational optimization. This operational optimization should be done at all stages. The company now need to explore hedging strategy, how to hedge, long term leasing negotiations and alternate revenue. We will come to this. Because then only my impact on cash reserves can be positive. Current data, just to update on current data is. Available seat per kilometer is one hundred and fourteen thousand. Revenue per passenger is ninety four thousand millions. Passenger load factor, this is very important, how much passenger load factor you have. Cost per available seat kilometer. Revenue per available seat kilometer. Now this is very important factor to understand. If my cost per seat is four point eight five and my revenue per eight four point eight zero. Though the difference seems very nominal, it's just five percent difference. But it becomes a huge because I am comparing with ninety million passengers. So ninety million into five percent becomes a huge impact. And because of this factor, you need, this cash will be depleted. Average of shooting flights canceled, it is one percent still okay. On time performance is something what you are known for. If your customer complains flying more, keeping more, it becomes a negative with airlines industry. We will take a ten minute short break now. And resume after ten minutes. So it is twenty twenty, we will come back at twenty thirty. Then we will discuss on flight cancellation and then after that we will discuss on a very important point of Indias. Because Indias has a huge impact on airlines. So let us take a break now and resume at twenty thirty, ten minutes.
So participants, welcome back and my sincere apologies. I was not able to see the queries chat. I was only seeing the Zoom chat. So there are certain queries which I just saw now. So the difference between Airbus and Boeing is, so these are two different companies. So it is just like. Uh, uh, Maruti and and Hyundai. So these are two companies which are really famous in making planes. The technical difference would be a little bit on, let's say. The Airbus, you know, the way, if you have seen video games, you know, we have a joystick. So Airbus use joystick to fly the planes. So they just have that lever of joystick. But if you see Boeing, Boeing use a a control barrier, just like we have car handles, similar like that Boeing user. Yes, difference on size, difference on how the engine makes noise, that's the difference, the kind of emission they do it. So these are technical differences and these are two different industries. So Boeing and Airbus are known as the two companies who run the entire. Entire air airlines ecosystem. They will make the planes what you want. They will make various fleets based on your size and requirement and that will work on. So as I discussed, that one of the biggest challenges in the airlines industry is flight cancellations. What are the challenges to flight cancellations? Can you quickly think of what happens when a flight cancels? So the flight could cancel for two reasons. One, natural calamity. Thunder has happened, storm has come, uh, too much rains happening that you cannot know visibility, that could be one of the reasons. So. Natural calamity could be one where you and I, nobody can control. If let's say there is a huge tornado coming like it happens in US a lot. Planes cannot fly out. So that's a natural calamity. There's a uh, ice, uh, s- snow hailing happening. That's a natural calamity that cannot be done. So that is not in our control. So whenever such kind of things happen, flight cancels, then I need to refund my fees and everything. That's one thing. What about normal cancellation? I don't have sufficient staff, my my pilot got tired, he cannot fly, he ran, he went off duty or. Because of delay happening in another flight with a further delay in taking off. So what are the issues? If if there is a more than four hours delay, I need to provide meals to my customers. If my customers have booked some some other flights from my connecting flights, I need to reimburse that. If it is causing more delay, I need to give them hotel stay. So earlier, lot of airline company lost money because of hotel stay. And the hotel stay has to be in four to five star hotels. That's why, that's what bothers the airlines, that delay should not happen. And that's why now they are focused too much on avoiding delays. But I am sure you all heard stories where pilot have left the plane and say my flying time is over, I am not permitted to fly more than this because of. Again, aviation ministry rules that you cannot fly more than this because of your being tiredness, it might cause damage. So they leave in between. So this this becomes a huge challenge. Because any flight costs the cost, rising attrition and employee concerns. If there are six, seven airlines and you don't pay me well, then I will go to another airlines. And every airline needs an experienced person. So if you say I work in next airlines company, I'll be happy to take you as compared to a pressure who is coming for me to job. Because whatever exit interviews they have taken, they say our face scale is low as compared to competitors. Long working hours and fatigue. This impacts shortages, impacting cancellations. It leads to more training costs, that is impact. Every cancellation has a challenge of refunds and paying cost. On time performance issue happens, on time performance issue happens a lot. Because it, so it is like a change, uh, chain reaction. One delay lead to another delay and another delay. Anyone of you who have traveled in plane and got any flight cancellation or flight delayed, practically experienced someone. Anybody has experienced this? When you would have traveled and there would be a significant delay, not fifteen, twenty minutes, one hour delay. I am talking a significant delay or a flight cancellation. Anyone has experienced ever or any of your relatives or family member who have traveled? Then what 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 was the approach by airlines? What did they compensate it? How did they compensate you? By giving some goodie bags or some lunch or dinner meal coupons or strain hotels? Any idea Prashant, what, how they would have sorted out? No. So they would have just said sorry and would have given some goodie bags, some coupons and that's what something they do that. So, uh, but where it is overnight flights delayed, they give hotels. So all hotels and nearby Gurugang, Gurugang airport are booked for airlines only. So they started monitoring OTP across ma- metro airports. Yeah, so they provide meals. So so Tithi, there is a, there is a, there is a airlines room. If it is more than six hours, they need to give you a stay. That's uh, that's planned. That's why, that's why you see they always try saying. They do not announce immediately six hours. They say it is one hour delay, it is two hours delay. Then they simultaneously start increasing the delay. Then they say it is just on the verge of flying. They tried improving OTP to get compliances, customer satisfaction. They start sending messages to customers and that's why after every flight you get a message from airlines. Tell us how did you feel about our experience? Turnaround time is very important key. The more quickly you can fly off, the more quickly you can fly off, you can get a, make more money. The shortest time you can remove from landing and take off, you can make more money. It includes all passenger loading, cleaning, maintenance, refueling. Average one hour it takes to fly from, one flight to another flight. After you land, another one hour is needed for entire operations. But the lesser time you take, the more money you make. Operational efficiency cannot be compromised, safety protocols as I mentioned, safety has to be mandatory. The audit has to be serious. So audit not only financial world is important, audit of operation parts is also important. And you cannot be lethargic at all in that. So as I mentioned, it is a non-negotiable. Even in financial audit, you cannot be lethargic again. Remember because. You are the interns, you are the eyes of practicing CAs, you know, you go and vouch. So you cannot be, it is a non-negotiable. Technical gap was, they are facing technical gaps. They wanted to hire new engineers and engineer has to be trained in-house. This will help them produce turnaround delays. They will be ready for operations, safety compliance would be ensured. Why it is expected? Because their passenger increase from seventy five million to ninety million and they expect this to continue forever. I'll skip the three part and come to most important one. Now this comes a very important part. Now, Indias compliance is management responsibility. The board need to provide Indias financials. Now. This is generally the definition of asset. Something is intentionally written incorrect in this. Can you tell me what is incorrectly written in this? What is incorrectly written in this? Something in the asset definition is mentioned wrong. Typo is there intentionally. Any idea what do you think which is not right in this definition? Kithi, everything, everything works for future benefits. You are doing C A only for future benefit, right? I am doing C, I don't know, C only for future benefits. You recognize an asset only if it gives you future benefit, right? If you have a asset which does not give you future benefit, will you keep that asset in your balance sheet? Technically and logically, considered, right? So future benefit is the right word. It's right. And 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 I'm just to explain you. This future benefit does not mean guaranteed future benefit. Even if it is probable future benefit, that you may get a benefit, then also you will keep it. Like for example, brand goodwill, you may get it, but still you keep it, not guaranteed. So that is the right part, but still you gave a thought. Anybody else could think? Something which is very obvious, but because of I F R S or Indias, it changes. This definition used to be a valid definition. Resource, everything is a resource. Everything is a resource. You're near to that. You're close to that. Is it necessary to be? Owned, then only it becomes my asset? Or even without owning, it can be my asset. What do you think? If the word owned is not to be there, then what the word should be instead of owned? What do you think? If the word owned is should be replaced, what should be the word, it should be there? It should be control. So something which is not mine, but still I can control it, then it becomes my asset. Any idea this change happened due to which standard? Which standard let this change happen in definition? Which accounting standard I F R S or Indias standard made, which is very relevant to airlines industry? Now, does airlines industry generally, airlines companies like? Air India, Indigo, Vistara, SpyJet, do they buy the planes? Or do they lease the planes, so Indias one one six? Because of this, this standard came in. And why this standard came in? Because. Buying the plane is not commercially makes sense for all of the companies. It requires huge capital. So they go for control. So that's why Indias came in. What does this mean of control? What does it means? If I have taken a plane or any asset we have taken for more than one year. Then it means you have a control over that asset. So now the standard says you need to go for, you need to go for. Uh, showing it as a right of use. So in day, in Indias. This standard create a lot of havoc in airlines industry. Why it create a lot of issue in airline industry? Why it create a lot of issue? So can I assume little bit of lease standard you all are aware, little bit of lease standards you are aware? Basics you are aware, can you assume all? Fine. Now, what do you do in a normal scenario? So let me take quick example. And let us understand why, why this standard becomes a challenge in, this becomes a challenge in. Airlines industry, why not another industry? So. Okay. Now. Just know. Are you able to see Excel file now? Okay. So, let's say. Now the lease happens generally in ANR terms or dollar terms? What do you think? If airline, Air India, Vistara will like to agreement with Boeing or Airbus, they will do me in ANR or dollar terms, they will do in dollar terms, right? Now this is what the challenge comes in. Now, let's say, I want to take a very simple example. I want to lease out a plane. And hundred thousand dollar is, let's say, let's say is my rental per year, hypothetically. And I lease it for, will I lease it for one year or generally I lease for ten, twenty, thirty years? What do you think? Brilliant, Kithi, that's what I was trying to touch on. Generally, I will book for, generally, I will book for twenty to thirty years generally. Okay, as long, as long as the life of the plane generally I like to book it for there. I cannot book for two, three, five years. I have long. For example purpose, I am just taking five years for explanation purpose. Now what happens here is. I took a plane for one lakh per mo- per annum, five years I need to pay. The moment I make this contract, the spot rate of dollar is eighty five rupees. Average rate during the year, let's say during the year twenty twenty, four twenty five, average it becomes eighty eight rupees. And closing rate as on thirty first March becomes ninety. So now I need, and the borrowing rate, the incremental borrowing rate is nine percent. Just give me a minute. Sure. Just give me. Uh, I hope this is visible quite to all now. So let's say the borrowing rate becomes nine percent incremental borrowing rate. So I need to book a R O U, right? So first we will book a R O U, to book a R O U, I will do a calculation. How I will do a calculation? I will put five years, one, two, three, four, five. Then I will put a lease payment, hundred thousand dollars per year. I will compute the present value, discounting factor will carry out for at the rate of nine percent for year one, two, three, four, five. I will arrive at present value. So present value is coming, three hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's the dollar present value. The spot rate because I am doing entry on day one, year one, eighty five. So my. So my answer comes, total liability comes three hundred thirty thousand. Now, this would be my R O U, we agree? This would be my R O U. And now on the same day, my lease liability would be how much? On the same day? Same amount or different amount? So on the same day it should be same lease liability because balance sheet should match, so it should be same amount on same day. Now I will take smaller part first to explain. Now, this R O U, I need to depreciate over how much period? This R O U, how I am, I need to depreciate over how much period? Within the life of the lease, five years. Now my question is, my accounting policy is W D V. So can I use W D V method of depreciation? Yes, no, maybe? What is your view? My accounting policy is the W D V, you know, return on value method? My accounting policy is WDB, you know, return on value method, I can do that, companies have permit me doing that. So my question is, can I use this policy in ROU, yes, no, maybe? Any quick thoughts? Maybe, that's a more diplomatic, diplomatic answer, okay. Now, Kithi, the problem is, if I do at WDB, can I finish in five years? Can my asset become zero in five years? It cannot be, right? So, we will always use SLM irrespective of, only for ROU assets, we need to use SLM method irrespective of what is your depreciation policy, because after five years I need to make asset zero. Now, since this is in dollars, okay? So my question is, the dollar keep on changing, right? Year one it is eighty-five, year two it would be, it can become ninety, year three it could become ninety-four, whatever it could be. It can go even further down also, it can come back to eighty also, depending on our relationship with Trump and how do Mr. Trump plays, you know, depending on that. So my question is, do I need to restate my ROU of FX movement, yes, no, maybe? Yes, okay. Anybody with a counter answer? Kithi has given me one answer, yes, which I don't know is the right answer or not, I don't know. But anybody has a counter answer, do I need to restate my ROU? Okay, Kithi, again when I say names, when I stick names, I am not checking anybody's knowledge, okay? Do not understand, I am thinking, because being a critical subject, I need to talk. So that's why picking name is easy for me to create interest for me. Because I don't know about you, if I don't take your names, I will go to sleep. You know, I only see blank screen, right? We don't need to restate, one. Can you explain Kithi to Sunil, why we don't need to restate? Why you don't need to restate, because first you said restate, then, then you remember the standard and you say, no, it does not to be restated. Why? So Sunil, is this, is this a monetary asset or non-monetary asset, ROU? It is a non-monetary asset. So, S per India's sixteen and S per IS twenty-one, India's twenty-one for an exchange, we don't need to restate the non-monetary assets. So any fixed assets, property plan equipment purchased on historical past, we don't restate, because this is a non-monetary asset. So here we will not restate it. Now comes the bigger question. Asset, I am not going to restate. Am I going to restate the liability? Yes, no, maybe? I need to restate the liability. Now, where will the difference goes? Where will the difference goes? Now that becomes a challenge, it will go to my, but in Forex where it will hit? Where do you think it will hit? It will hit in my P and L. And that becomes my, that becomes my fluctuation. And that is very challenging for my P and L. Because this I could not control, this I could not manage, okay? So why, what happens in a lease liability? So in a lease liability, my initial value will come based on three hundred dollars. I pay, what are the dollar, you know, this is the dollar we recognize, three eighty-eight. So when we do a lease accounting liability, I will book in a, in a dollar term, three eighty-eight, I will pay hundred thousand, what I am paying. I will book nine percent interest, when my closing value comes, three twenty-three, that's my closing value comes. My P and L hit would be, go to the interest cost, that's the interest cost, what will happen, that will hit my P and L. But the lease liability, which ideally should be three thirty opening, less interest which I am adding, less payments I am making at ninety, my lease liability will become two seventy-one theoretically. But because of the restatement of financial liability, because it is a monetary liability, it's a financial liability, I need to pay in cash. That's why my P and L will got hit by twenty lakh extra. So this will always be fluctuating, that will keep damaging my P and L. So this is a negative part. What is the positive part of this standard? Any idea what is the positive part? What is the positive part, any weak thought? What is the positive part of this standard? What do you think? What do you think? So the, so, so Kithi, you are not answering my question, is EBITDA going to be up or down? Ultimate question for me is, as a management and as an investor, EBITDA will go up or down? That's a big question. What do you think? See, there is no negative marketing class as I said, and I am not noting your name that Kithi has given me wrong answer, if any. Okay, so it will go up, absolutely right, so it will go up. Now think, now think and understand why, why this is important to understand. As an investor, I would like to see EBITDA go up or go down as an investor. And again, it is, it is a paraphrasing, you know, what's expense which, which I was showing as a rental expense showing into P and L. Now I am splitting it up, I am splitting in depreciation and interest expense and showing my EBITDA. So this is the positive sign for the standard where EBITDA shows up. And rest of you understand this, that when EBITDA shows up, the valuation goes up. You know, there is a valuation also, valuation concept. The valuation goes up because of high EBITDA. That's why we need to understand when you are doing accounting now. If you, if, if you are a CEO, they are working there and they ask you, okay, Kithi or Sundar or all participants who are answering, I am skipping names last few, who are answering early. Tell me how to handle this, this volatility. This is a volatility, we understand, this is a fluctuation. Sunil or Kithi or anyone else who are answering earlier, what, what do you think could be the best answer to this? How can you help me in getting, solving this demon? I want you to advise me, how can I safeguard this? Can I, how do stop fluctuation to some extent? What do you think? Anyway or nothing can be done? One thing I understand from my last twenty years of experience in both sides, there will be always a solution, there will be always a solution, you should be smart enough to hedge, absolutely right. So if you are smart enough to hedge, you can always safeguard. And there are many professionals who are expert in FX and they are, they are doing wonders in their industry, because they know, they understand FX market, they know how to hedge. And hedging becomes a very important tool for saving the, saving the company. And when you start learning, you can always learn on that. So lease part, I am sure we understand, lease is something, is a part and parcel of India's one-one-six and airlines industry. Revenue, what is the challenge in revenue? Let's say, let's say, if you have booked the tickets ever, if you ever booked a ticket, you would have seen, the breakup shows, ticket price, let's say Jaipur to Mumbai, eighty-eight thousand rupees, eight thousand breakup would be, six thousand rupees is the ticket price, fifteen hundred rupees is security fees, or passenger security fees, five hundred would be airport authority fees. So what do you think, what should I book my revenue? My revenue should be eight thousand or it should be six thousand? What do you think? It should be only six thousand. Despite I am charging eight thousand, my revenue should be only six thousand, why? Because just like GST does not become my revenue, similarly, I am just an agent on behalf of airlines authority, aviation industry, government to collect money from you and give to them. So I am just a passing vehicle, the money does not hold to me. I don't have a discretion of that money. Because, because whenever you go to the airport, there is a CASF security force, so the government says I will charge for it. So they are charging for frisking you. So I am just taking that amount which government wants me per passenger to pay to the government authorities, so that does not become my revenue. So I will always show net of, there will be never grossing of a revenue. It will be, if I show total eight thousand, so someone can always argue, you know, smart jugglery accounting. Just show eight thousand in the top and in the P and L show two thousand revenue and show the net result is the same. Profit is still the same, what is harming, no, it does have impact. Because as per standard, this does not become my revenue. So that, we need to be very careful on this, these are the two standard that will bother you, rest will not bother you much. The strategic pillars of leadership in this would be fleet management, as I mentioned. What kind of fleet you have, initially we wanted to go for one kind of airlines only. Try to lease the airlines, do not own it, the more you own it, the become challenging it is. Leasing is always better. Give only economy seating, once you give only economy seating, then it's fine. Then what you can do, you can give, why, why, why not, why not a premium seating? Any thoughts, why many airlines you will see do not have a premium class, any idea, any thoughts? Any big thoughts you can think of, why we don't have business class? Well, there might be someone who can afford and say, Bhagwan ka diya, sab kuch hai mere paas, dolar thay shorat hai, hum business class se jayenge. Why does not some airlines factor that? I am sure you are aware, many airlines have only economic class. So, so Kithi, I am, I am paying extra, right? You cannot be that mean to me, right? I am, I am paying extra for that, right, premium. So economy you charge four thousand, business class you charge eight thousand. So I am going to pay you payment, then what's the problem? So your answer is lying in that statement only. What if, if no business, no businessman comes for business class? Then that space goes vacant. Then, do you think I can let some economy class passengers sit there? I can't, because then everybody in the plane will start shouting, oh, mujhe bhi de do, mujhe bhi de do. Ya aapke gaam kaise liye aapne isko jyada de diya, nepotism ho raha hai, and becomes a huge issue in sorting and. So airlines tried that, then what they did, then what they did? So, so I am giving you two perspective. Domestic airlines generally you will not find, many airlines domestically will not have a business class, they will give you all economy. But then what they will do? The first row of economy class, they will charge high premium. So if you want to book first row seat, pay a little bit extra and get a more extra room, leg space. What they do in international flights, what they do in national flights? So let's say I generally travel in economy, right? When you are buying from your own ticket, when you are on the, it's your only company, you go by travel, right? Client is not funding me, right? So I go by economic class. Let me, many others goes, mostly goes by economic class, in, I am talking international flights. But international flights also have a premium class, they have a business class. So they, let's say they have sixteen seats as a business class. Not all the time, not all the time their sixteen seats are filled. So there will be only eight seats are filled and eight seats are empty. Now eight seats are costing space, so what they do, any idea what they do now? What they do? So there are sixteen business class seats, only eight have been occupied, eight are vacant. What should the airlines do now to recover money? How do they offer? So you are right, they offer, how do they offer, any idea? On the spot. You see, on the spot if I offer, so what they do is, they don't go on the spot, what they do that? They will send an email to all people who have booked at economy. All people who have booked, they will say, look, there is a seat available, seats available in, in business class. You give your bid, how much you will pay extra for that business class? You will be surprised at times even in twenty dollars. So let's say my flying ticket is from Jaipur to Dubai is let's say hundred dollars. Business classes, let's say two fifty dollars. At times even by paying twenty dollars extra, we got business class. Because if you have not bid and it is empty, so what does the authority says? Let us take twenty, allot him a seat, I will have one more vacant seat of economy class. Last moment, somebody will come to the airport and I can easily sell economy class and get my money out. So this kind of strategy you need to adopt, the companies adopt, to at least start selling and getting money. Strategic pillar of cost leaderships are digital transformation we discussed, talked about. Promote online booking and check-in, nowadays online booking and checking. And how do you promote online booking and checking, how do you promote check-in? If you remember a long time back, we used to go to airport and say, I forget my ticket at home. Physical ticket, I have program ticket at home, then there were no internet and WhatsApp at all. You please go and print us, so she will ask my name or the reception counter who will ask my name and print it. Now, this habit has been ingrained for last twenty years. So I never used to carry ticket and go to the airport counter and say. Last three years back, they started putting hundred rupees for this service, they say you come to us, you say give me a printout, give me hundred rupees, I will give you a printout. Now what do you think? Do I take printout from home and put in mobile or I will still go back and say, give me a printout? Now, once you put penalize someone for this basic services, they will come in order. Now we all carry our printout from home and always take mobile boarding passes. So you need to promote this kind of activities to reduce interaction. The more and more you put on automated, less cost will be involved for human resource. Reduce agent commissions, give ancillary services as I mentioned, give them, give them movie, give them wifi, people will buy. Partner with premium brands to maximize yield, give them exam grants. Airlines operation revenue we just talked about. You give a discount and revenue, GST is only charged on revenue. Whatever aviation security fee, user development fee are not your fees, these are to be returned to the, to the authorities, that is not your price. I asked a question earlier of that, what is the challenge in giving a loyalty card? That, you know, we give a challenge of, we give a discount of, you know, mileage that you fly, you fly hundred miles, I will give you one thing extra. What is the challenge of it? Any idea, what is the challenge of this? The challenge is, I lose for the revenue. If I give you a coupon that redeem from Jaipur to Mumbai, the eight thousand revenue which I am supposed to get, I will lose that revenue. So what does they expect? So they expected that do not give full redemption, partly redemption and partly some cash payment, so that secures. Or instead of redemption, give them some, some other places to redeem. You can redeem at airport, at any lounge, this kind of, so this will give you, customer satisfaction will also be there and you can save money also. Reduce attrition of customers by calling town hall meetings, make them good pay, don't give long working hours. Ensure that type with aviation institute, so you get more and more quality based people, give them performance based recognition. Give them enhanced facilities, staff, mess, transit, recreation, everything. This is for all, only for employees. Balance scorecard. This balance scorecard, though we have not seen much usage in India, you have not seen much usage in day-to-day life, but globally it is used a lot. One of the classic example is Fentis Airlines, one of the best airlines in the world, they uses the, they uses the balance scorecard a lot. Generally, what is balance scorecard generally, it talks about four parameters. What is the impact, so balance scorecard, what itself says balance? So they say, okay, whatever you are doing, how, how much impact is on financial? How much impact is on customer? Internal process, how much is impact and what is the learning and growth for it? On these four parameters, they consider on the salaries, they consider the growth. Say for example, financial, how does you look to the shareholder? Customers, how does customer feel about us? Internal process, what should we do better at? Something every time you need to improve yourself, every time you need to get something new. Learning and growth, how can we improve and add more value while learning? So these are certain balance scorecard points, which I am sure you all have studied. So these are airline related, which you can see later in the slides. What are the future outlook for airlines? Addresses operational bottlenecks, sustain cost leadership. Engage, customer engagement loyalty, visual footprint, employee engagement. Now, why this employee engagement is very important? I will give you one classic example, why it is very important? Now, this is the annual report, this is the annual report of, this is the annual report of Fentis Airlines. Now, they made public on how did they give a remuneration bonus to staff? Short-term incentive plan and long-term incentive plan, how do they do that? So they give full detail. Now, interestingly, they give how it has to be used. So they mentioned that when we give bonus, how we give bonus, base pay, target opportunity. What is a group scorecard, this balance scorecard and your individual performance both. Not only you shine, as a leader, not only I should do the best. I should ensure my group, my cluster which I am heading, they should also do the best. If both are able to do, then you get marks. Now, why this report is very important, I will, very interestingly you need to read. So they submit a policy, okay, that how did they write? Now see, if, let me little Now see, let me little bit increase and see the word you can read. Following the strike against our remuneration report. So in twenty twenty three annual report, they submitted this report that how we are paying. And the employees tried against the report, they say you have paid too much to the C E O. The C E O got too much salary because what are the board things? But they think that we were also responsible to get higher share but we did not got it. So they say C F O remuneration are very high. So you will be surprised, they, they deducted his salary back. How based on employees resentment, they reduce their salary from thirty-six percent to twenty-six percent. But this report is relevant because they explain that what we are looking from in a, in a employees. That when we are making group scorecard, what is the target expected, what is the outcome expected? That what he should do, what group should do, what customer should do, what safety should do. So these kind of scorecards will help to get a better clarity on how the remuneration should be distributed to the top level of management. So that should be asked crystal clear, otherwise there will be always a, always a strike happens against your activity. So board of directors, so they have capable board of directors. Because you need to have independent and always independent director should be your chairman, that is, that shows that board is functioning independently. So they have a lot of board of directors. You need to also have someone from the business background. You cannot always put all non-technical person on the board. So if it is a airlines industry, somebody who is a pilot, somebody who understands the airlines industry should be on your board. Then only you can take business, you just cannot say, oh I had the best chartered accountant, he is a answer. No, I can be, I can give good insights on numbers. But can I give good insights on technical aspects? Probably no, until I develop that knowledge. So you need to have some technical persons on the, on the board who can give guide board directly. Now, understand one question here. We hired one independent director. Independent director was appointed because there was a casual vacancy arise on third September twenty-three. His appointment was subsequently approved by members in next board meeting. He is independent director in various companies. Now this all skip off. Now let me take few quick questions. I will skip that detail on questions where we will not have much time. Now let's say. On Mister K B who was appointed in third September. He resigned after working for forty-five days. Now instead of that, board wishes to appoint Mister Steeper as an independent director. The board meeting is scheduled on thirty-first December twenty-two-three. Advise the board keeping in the provisions of Companies Act. How Mister Stephen can be appointed? And what is the maximum time in which the appointment can be made by the company? Can it be done by the board, not done by the board, what is your view? Any quick thought in Companies Act? Anyone has any quick thoughts whether? What is the maximum time within which we need to appoint him? Any quick thought? What is the maximum time in which you need to appoint a director? He resigned on nineteenth October. So how much time I have, any empty recall Companies Act section? For timelines and Companies Act? Any quick? So it is. What does the law says? Any idea? Within how many days? So this case study is given in our case digest, so let me just rephrase. So whenever there is a, let me freeze. Whenever there is an intermittent vacancy of independent director. It shall be filled by board at earliest but not later than next board meeting. Or three months from the date of vacancy which is later. So if he resigned on nineteenth October, the next board meeting is happening thirty-first December. I can either put it here. But law allows me to the time of eighteenth January because three months finishes on which year is later. So it is my choice. If I appoint thirty-first December, it is fine. For some reason I could not appoint by thirty-first December, I still have time until eighteenth January. If I don't appoint by eighteen January, then it becomes a non-compliance. So we need to be aware of law because you can do as early as possible. But if you don't know the law, the becomes a challenge. We need to always know the law. Now we discuss this, we discuss this ticket sales, so as you mentioned. Anything which is user development fee. And G S team will not be our income. Why it will not be our income? Because standard expert index one-one-five or any revenue standard expert A S eighteen also, it does not fit in our income. Because we are not supposed to take it. It is not my control, I just need to collect and give. So I am acting like a postman. I am taking from you, giving to the government, it is not my revenue. Am I able to keep something in between? Does government allow me something to keep in between? Answer is no. That that's why it does not become my, it does not become my income. So we always recognize revenue which is my company income which I can keep in my pocket. Where I have a control over it. Now this is a very simple question which I am sure everybody can answer. Aircraft own or leased required periodic maintenance. High value cost provision has to be made based on number of variable factors. Due to the complexity of, of the subjectivity of the conditions, audit, relevant management judgment, amount of provision to be made. Which type of risk is this? You know whether even the aircraft is leased or owned. It requires maintenance, I need to make a provision for expenses of maintenance. Can I say it is rented, so I am leased bothered, now I need to keep a maintenance, provision need to be done by me. So my question is which risk it will come into? Inherent control detection contract, what do you think? What do you think? Which risk it will come into? Any quick thoughts? Last few more minutes to go. It will be inherent risk. So certain things will always be there, there is always a susceptibility of assertion to material misstatement. Because this is based on management judgment. If any assumption or judgment is incorrect, the risk of material misstatement is high. So it will always be inherent risk. And this, this risk is not like control risk, it is an inherent risk. Cashier committed a fraud. And absconded with the proceeds. Chief accountant was unaware when fraud occurred. Even the audit, during the audit, auditor also did not discover the fraud. After audit completion, chief accountant came to know fraud happened. And inquired that auditor did not exercise proper skill and care, performing the work in discernitory and hazardous manner. It may happen that water missed, after that chief accountant found out. What do you think which statement seems correct? What is the fourth? What do you think is the best answer? Shall it be? Only option four, option second and four, option second and third, option one and third? So we got one option. What about others? What other things? Should it be part one clause seven of part one or clause seven of part two, what do you think? It will be option. C, second and third. Because this clause part seven. Sorry. This clause of part two, it should be part one, there is a gross negligence misconduct comes here. I will skip these small, simple things. I will, I leave this P P T for you so you can go and check it. Now I will just stop now and leave for questions and keep some time for questions, so it is a period of seventeen. So feel free to ask questions. Any questions you have on? Any topic?
Sir, there is one question for you from Mister Shankara. Sir, can you please tell what is the difference between Boeing and Airbus?
I explained it earlier a little bit, but I will like explain again. So because when I joined after the break, I explained this because I saw all the questions are coming in the. Okay. But Shankar, are you, are you here? So just you want me to explain again Shankar? So brothers, if you get the question, so question is, what is it? Because I, as I mentioned. The supplier pressure is there in airlines industry and the supplier pressure means. There are only two airlines, two companies who give manufacture these fleets. One is Boeing and one is Airbus. Boeing rules the, Boeing rules the industry and after Boeing comes Airbus. So the difference between Boeing and Airbus is the type of plane they manufacture. If you see the, if you ever see the cockpit, you will see certain cockpits. If you ever get a chance to see cockpit, just see that it's very interesting to see cockpit. So in one of the cockpits you will see, instead of how do they fly, they have a joystick. You know just like you have video games, we have a joystick. Similar to airline, Airbus has a joystick. But if you see Boeing, they have, just like we have a, just like we have a steering in car. Half steering they have on the plane. So Boeing works more on a like you are driving a car type that way and joystick just like you are playing a game and flying a plane. There is a difference on size and difference on the noise of the engine. So Boeing engine does not make noise. But Airbus because the patent is with Boeing, that's why they have the best engine in terms of noise. But the patent Airbus engine makes a huge noise. Also in terms of capacity, capacity is different. Boeing are two sets, seven-seven-seven, seven-three-seven, these are two bigger airlines. Which Boeing can keep three hundred eighty passengers approximately. Airbus gives various planes, they give small planes, thirty-seater plane also, they give ninety-seater plane also and one-eighty-seater plane also. That's the main difference on what they make size, that way.
Thank you sir. Thank you sir for highlighting the importance of understanding and approach I B S case studies effectively. We hope all our students will take opportunity to dive deeper into the subject and make the most of the insight shared. Wishing everyone a fruitful learning experience. Students, if you have any general queries you may ask. Now I am sharing with you some I B S paper strategies, okay? First of all, you have to start by carefully analyzing the case study. Okay, two, first of all, you have to identify key issues and factor. Analytical approach in this context would mean. The method on breaking down or complex problem process into a smaller parts. So that everyone can understand the whole things and then address various issue involved in the case study. First of all, you have to break down issue into smaller parts then you accordingly then resolve. Sabse pehle aapko jo koi issue hoga usko samalar parts me breakdown karna hoga aur uske baad aap usko solve kar payenge. Then integrate knowledge from various subjects forming part of syllabus to develop comprehensive solutions. After this, apply conceptual frameworks to analyze and solve problems. And try to think critically the implication of your decisions and consider alternative solution if possible. And clearly communicate your analysis and recommendation in your responses. If a question says evaluate then evaluate. Evaluate means you have to give proper pros and cons. Agar question kahate ki aapko evaluate karna hai to aapko uske proper pros and cons dekhar hi evaluate karna hoga. Agar strength or weakness aapko dono hi deni hongi. Agar khali aapne strength diya aur weakness nahi diya to vo sufficient nahi hoga. To it means if a question says evaluate then evaluate it by giving proper pros cons and after this you have to conclude. Okay, after this manage your time effectively. During the exam to ensure that you can complete all questions within the allocated time. Prioritize your response based on the marks allocated. Since it is the open book exam, it is very important to take relevant material with you. And there is one query, please tell what are the books we need to take to examination hall during the I B S exam? Feel free to refer any study material you are comfortable with. It is advisable to carry material that forms the foundation of your preparation. Agar aapne kisi material ke saath study kia hai to vo material aapke liye sabse best hoga. Thik hai to aap hamesha vo material carry kijiye jisse aapne, aapne usse tayari kia hai. Thik hai, there is one more query as I am giving group two and clear group one in November twenty-four. What approach should I follow in I B S paper to score well? Even, even if your primary focus is on group two. Now you, now here you can follow a smart strategy to select one or two papers from group one and prepare them thoroughly. Okay, at the same time build a basic conceptual understanding of remaining subjects. Why it is important? Because identify the relevant concepts quickly. Apply them accurately using the understanding, using your understanding of case and the open book material. Mardab ki aapko agar yeh maaloom hai ki agar aapne kisi concept ko dhang se padha hai to aap usko easily aap apply kar sakte hain. Thik hai, aap open book exam ke andar kya hoga ki agar aapne koi concept ko dekha hai to usko easily open kar sakte hain exam ke andar. Aur uske baad, problem ko identify karne ke baad aap usko apply kar sakte hain. Agar aapko pata hi nahi to sabse pehle to aap usko dhunoge. Aur dhunne ke baad aap kya karoge? Usko apply karoge aur ho jata hai galat apply kar to. Agar aapne apply bhi kar diya to uske baad kya hoga? Vo jo aapne jo exercise kia hai na, vo aapka dusre question ka time kill kar jayega. To isliye basic concept ka understanding hona bahut jaruri hai. Thik hai, therefore it is very important to build a basic conceptual understanding of the subjects. This approach not only boosts your performance in the I B S paper but also make your foundation very strong. The clarity you develop now especially in the subject like F R audit, strategic management will continue to benefit you in your professional journey. Students, if you have any query you may ask. Otherwise I will conclude the session. Very happy. Okay. As we come to the end of today's session, I would like to say a big thank to you to our speaker C A Sumit sir. For sharing his time, knowledge and experience with us. Sir, your practical examples and clear way of explaining things have really helped us. Sir, your practical examples and clear way of explaining things have really helped us. Understand how to look at case studies with strategic mindset. You have shown us how to think uh like decision maker, not just students. To all our students, thank you for being so active and involved. Your questions made the session more engaging and enjoyable for everyone. We hope today's session give you more clarity and confidence when you work on case studies in the future. This is just the beginning. Keep learning, stay curious and always think big. We will see you again in our next session on second May. Till then, take care and stay connected. All the best and thank you once again.
Thank you all. Thank you, sir. And all the best words, bye, students. Have a good day. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Prashant, we will upload it.
Yes.